Concerned that that effectively means that the council is, I guess, tying future councils, and I believe that the period of time is excessive. In relation to item D, the third review of the budget, and these documents, I proceed with these, this is my, I've got some, a number of issues that I wish to raise in relation to that matter. This, the budget does review, so it does reveal the tactics of the L N P, the L N P budget around election times, substantial increases in charges planned for after the election, and so net rates and utility charges to go up six point, over six per cent in the 2021 budget, and that's about four times inflation rate currently existing in Brisbane, and that's of concern. The other, there's some items here that just stand out, and I'd ask for an explanation from the, from the Chair. There's an item on page two, on other revenue, other revenues, the description, and 2018, 19, it's 339.949 million, and 2019, 20, 581.013 million, which according to my trusty calculator is a 70.9% increase, so, and that's a substantial amount of money as well, it's hundreds of millions of dollars, so an explanation of that would be, would be appreciated. Finance costs are another item that goes up substantially, from some 94.962 million to 126.624 million. That, the conclusion there is the council must be borrowing a lot more, because according to the experts that I read, and in fact, reports to the Finance Committee, no one's expecting interest rates to, to jump suddenly to justify such a big increase in finance costs, so I'm interested to know there whether the administration is intending to borrow a lot of money and go on a spending spree to make the city look all spick and span in the run-up to the election, and worry about paying the bill afterwards. The other one that's, there's a massive jump in the figure, is depreciation and amortisation, still on that page two, which jumps from 337 million to 520 million, another, another big increase as well. In, excuse me, page four of the, of the report, the cash, this is, this is an interesting one, because it's current assets, cash and cash equivalents, but in, opposite to what I said earlier, these, this, the revenue, the current assets already drops from 244 million to 195 million, again, probably demonstrating a spending sprees planned, 20.1% drop in current assets over that year, and other financial liabilities jumps, further down that page four, jumps from 75 million to 90 million, which is 19.68%, so that's another substantial change, which I'd like an explanation for. Cash flows from operating activities on page five, the revised figure for this financial year is 161.245 million, and, but in 2019, 20, it's 279.641 million, so a substantial increase, and again, lower on that page, the, there's a big, the big jump in finance cost is revealed again. Dividends received, just a query there, further down page five, dividends received, the revised amount for this financial year is 150 million, it's to jump to 192 million for 2019, 20, and then down to 162 million for 2020, 21. Now, I haven't seen anything that would say why that would be the case, I think the main source of dividends is, is Q U U and the C B I C, and my experience in the past, they don't jump up and down drastically that, that much, and it'd be interesting to, if the Chair could explain why there's the level of volatility that's shown in this report for dividends received. The final item on page five, at the bottom of that page, cash at year end, it's, cash at the beginning of the year for this financial year is 544 million, at the end, year end, it's due to be 244, which is a massive drop, and then for 2019, 20, it starts at 244 and is going to finish at 195, so the, over a two-year period, two financial years, the cash at the year end is going to drop from 544 to 195 million, again, is this a spending spree on the way? Running down cash reserves to, as I said, to make things look better than they are.
Counselor Cumming, your time has expired.
Mr. Chair, I move an extension.
Second. An extension has been moved by Counselor Cassidy, seconded by Counselor Strunk, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
The contrary, no, the ayes have it. Counselor Cumming, please continue.
Thank you. I jump to pa, page 10, and there, this is, the other feature of this document and the following document is, of course, the number of projects that are, there's carryovers, or there's rephasing of expenditure, basically, which will blow out the time when projects are completed by, and there's a large number of them throughout these documents, and the, first of these, I make reference to is on page 10, which is the, the Guyatt Park and Howard Smith Walls, Fairy Tunnels, carryover capital to 2019, 20, and 2021, and so delay is occurring there. Brisbane Metro, of course, the, the metro that's going nowhere fast, you'd hope the, the buses, if they, if we ever get them, go faster than the metro project is, because it's not going very far at all, and it's some, some $5 million being carried over there, and in relation to, then on to page 11, the administration's old friend, the Kingsford Smith Drive project, further 16 million being carried over for, for two years, two years, so you wonder when it's ever going to finish, Mr. Chairman, and the interesting one there, the inner-city bypass upgrade, it says here, decrease in revenue due to reduction in transurban Queensland funding for the Hurston Road off-ramp signalisation. Well, is there some sort of dispute with transurban? I mean, they were supposed to be paying, council were going to do the project, they were going to pay for it, and now it looks like they're not keen to pay for part of the work that's being done or proposed, and it's 1.4 million dollars, so an explanation from the Finance Chair or from the Infrastructure Chair as to what's happening there would be, would be much appreciated. I'll turn now to page 12, which is, delays galore in Programme Three, the Clean, Green and Sustainable City Programme, Norman Creek, carryover capital expense to forward years, Northern Stubbers Environment Centre, carryover expenditure to 1920 due to a revised delivery schedule, Renewing Greater Brisbane Gardens, carryover capital to 1920 due to a rise delivery schedule, even the 100% carbon neutral greenhouse gas reduction, carryover capital at 1920 due to a revised delivery schedule. I'm not sure, you know, if it's 100% carbon neutral, I would have thought that's a yearly target you have and you try to meet, and I'm not sure how you can say, oh, well, well, it's not going to be 100% this year, we'll do it next year, or, you know, again, that requires a considerable explanation. Page 13, page 13, is the, there's, appears to be a problem with a, a project, the Brisbane Infrastructure Depot Consolidation Project Team, they, throughout this document, the rest of this document, they get blamed for increasing expenses left, right and centre, and so on this page 13, I refer to 3.3.2.1 Conservation Reserves Management Operating, increase in expense due to Brisbane Infrastructure Depot Consolidation Project Team, likewise, 3.3.3.1 Managing Trees on Public Land, they get part of the blame there as well, and 3.3.6.1 Manage Mount Cootha Botanic Gardens and Reserves Operating Again, so an explanation of why that project, or that team is being blamed for, for all these expense, additional expenses through this document. The other one, of course, that's mentioned on that page, is the Anzac Square Restoration, it's, this was a project which most unfortunate, but very poor reflection on the administration when it wasn't ready for the Remembrance Day, the 100th Anniversary of Remembrance Day, and my understanding is it's still substantial work to be done, particularly in the crypt area, the underground area, and it's a long way short of being finished, and I just wondered if the administration would care to give a, a date and time for the project to be finished, and knowing that it probably won't occur anyhow. The, I turn now to page 14, again, just numerous examples of delays on page 14, the drainage programme in particular seems to be a real mess, the drainage, coastal hazard adaption, carryover expense and in revenue to 2019, 20 due to revised delivery schedule, drainage, construction and resilience, carryover capital, plans for future infrastructure, stormwater infrastructure, carryover capital, mitigate flooding, cyclic disilling waterways and drainways, carryover expense due to revised delivery schedule, there's hardly a project in that, that programme that's not adversely affected and not being carried over, and that's a matter of some concern. The green waste recycling service, there's a claim that increase in revenue and associated expenses, and I'd be, appreciate receiving the details of how many people have taken up the green waste bin in the last 12 months, and how that compares to previous years. The, and at 3.5.2.1, there's a couple of references again to the now infamous Brisbane Infrastructure Depot Consolidation Project Team, causing an increase in expense as well. The, in relation to lifestyle, again, there's carryovers galore there, the Cannon Hill Community Golf Links, the never-ending projects, St Lucia Golf Course Maintenance, compound upgrade, Aqua Parks, carryover capital, pool refurbishment, carryover capital, Musgrave Park Pool Refurbishment, carryover capital, it's, it's a bit like the drainage project, it seems to be the area where nothing's on time and it, and nothing's going to get done on time. I turn now, you'll be pleased that I'm finished with item D, I turn now to item E, the Annual Operational Plan Progress and Quarterly Financial Report, and again, this is an area where there is problems with the, obviously problems with some of the departments, again, I raised this matter, and my concerns remain that, that the, the administration, some of the departments is, is poor when they leave so much of their capital that they've been allocated under the budget to the last minute to, to expend, and that's revealed again in this report, but I'll turn first to page 10, building the transport network, and it refers to lower-than-anticipated expenditure mainly in the Kingsford Smith Drive Upgrade, Winham Road Stage One and Progress Road Stage Two, and rephased expenditure in Progress Road, Inner City Bypass and Kingsford Smith Drive Projects, so a, an explanation of that would be appreciated. The, sorry, I'll turn now to page 16, the, 16, that is the Economic Development Section, again, this is just, this is the start of the summaries of capital expenditure for each of the programmes, economic development to date has spent 1.27 million, the, that's nine months into the financial year, the approved annual budget's 5.46 million, that's 23.3% has been spent. Now, if there's some reason that economic developments decided not to spend all their capital, well, let's, they should make that clear.
Counselor Cumming, your time has expired.
Mr. Chair, I move an extension.
Second. Extension of time has been moved by Counselor Cassidy, seconded by Counselor Strunk, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
And those again, and those against say no, the ayes have it. Counselor Cumming.
Thank you to the chamber. The, yes, if there's, if there's an explanation as to why they're not going to spend their capital, well, let's have it, but let's, but surely they shouldn't be leaving so much of the funds for capital until so late in the financial year and then going on a spending splurge, because if they don't do that, then they'll, rest assured, they won't get that much capital next year, well, you'd hope not anyhow. The, after that, page 16, page 21, this is, again, there's reference there to the metro project, the other document was 5 million, this one it's 7.677 million, again, the metro is not progressing very quickly at all. The, in relation to page, then to page 24, congestion busting projects, this is interesting because perhaps it would have been good here to have a list of projects that actually went ahead, because there's a whole string of projects where they're not going ahead, and then there's another string of projects where further investigation is being undertaken, and then there's finally a couple of projects that have been identified for investigations, so I calculated there's in fact 10 congestion busting projects that investigation have completed but construction not progressed due to projects not achieving ward counselling or community support or cost above the funding limit. I guess, I'd be interested to know what percentage of the overall projects this is, there's 10, 10 that aren't going to go ahead, five that are undergoing further investigations, how many were there for the year, were there 20, or were there 30? I suspect it's a fairly large proportion of, of the projects that council spent a lot of money on investigations that aren't, aren't going to go ahead, so I'd be interested to know, that seems to be a, a trend these days with those types of projects, that council's getting a fair way down the track with, with investigation and in some cases, design, and then the plug gets pulled, and that seems to me to be a bit of a waste of ratepayer money. The, page 26, oh yeah, that's the 26, yeah, that's, sorry, that's what I was just talking about, page 29, which is the Clean, Green and Sustainable City, again, the expenditure of the capital, the bottom of page 29, sustainable and resilient community expenditure is only $65,000 out of a budget of 5.565 million, 1.2% has been spent after nine months in the financial year, low carbon and clean environment, 405,000 have been spent out of 16.271 million, that's two and a half percent, and in my view, that's not very good, very good budgeting. Page 31, page 31, just some concerns with the language used there on the issue of improving ecological health and livability of waterways, reduction in erosion and sediment control compliance for residential sites due to greater focus on large-scale residential and commercial building sites and unseasonal dry weather. Does that mean council's going to go a bit soft on individual projects, you know, if individual projects are causing a lot of erosion and the water's all running into the stormwater drains and into the, into the river or the bay, they'll say, oh, well, it's only, it's only one property, that's all right, and they're going to just do a thorough investigation, thorough inquiry into bigger subdivisions, knowing that there are fairly few large greenfield style subdivisions happening in Brisbane these days, I think, I think it's important that a reasonable level of compliance occur, doesn't matter how big the block is, and that if it's individual people or individual builders not doing the right thing, they should get, they should get warned and they should get fined if necessary, shouldn't be saying, oh, nah, it's only, it's only one block of land or whatever, because you add all the single blocks that are being developed around Brisbane together, that's a lot of, that's a lot of land and it's a lot of potential soil runoff occurring off those properties. In relation to page 40, page 40, the, this is one, the other side of the story in terms of, quite surprisingly actually, when you read the overall document, but there are a few sections of council which have, they've more than blown their annual allocation of capital after nine months, so the, on page 40, planning for a growing city, have spent 2.423 million, but the overall allocation was only 2.286, so they're at 106% after 70, after 75% of the year, so I guess they need to be careful on the other, the other hand and in not blowing their capital well before the end of the financial year. In Lifestyle and Community Services, again, the overall capital expenditure is only 29.9% this year, so far this year, and City Venues is the worst at 17.5%, and that's, again, I'll be interested to see what their final figure is for the year and what they're going to spend all that money on. In relation to page 47, golf courses, this one, I can recall seeing this one before, it's got rephased admission fees revenue in the golf courses service. Now, how can you have rephased admission fees? I mean, you're relying on the general public, I would have thought, to come onto the course and play golf or attend functions at the golf course clubhouse or whatever, or book the clubhouses for weddings or whatever, and, but now you can have rephased admission fees, like, you know, oh, yeah, we were going to come earlier in the year, but we're going to come later in the year now, and somehow the money, we'll get, make up the money that's been lost earlier, but that's, that's just a, that's a pretty ridiculous, in my view, some 248,000 dollars, and I'd like to know on what basis they think that this is going to be a sudden jump in, in golf course revenue, particularly unfortunately as the trend with courses is that, that there are less people playing golf, and the, must, there must be a threat to the revenue to council courses as well as to private courses because that's happening. Our old favourite, and it's a shame Council of Less is still not here, is mosquito and pest services, some 253,000 dollars rephased expenditure in the mosquito and pest services area, so, I mean, again, that's, you know, hecking, even on the administration's argument as to when the, the spraying for mosquitoes is done, you know, it's, how can you, how can you rephrase it or something, you know, how can you say, oh, well, it'll start raining, it'll start raining in, in, on about 15th of June and rain, rain for two weeks and we'll need to spend a lot of money on it then or something like that, that's, that's just ridiculous, as I said earlier. The Economic Development Section, Delivering World-Class Economic Precincts, page 51, only spent 23.3% of their capital, and the people looking to be part of world-class economic precincts perhaps would be a bit concerned about that, the fact that 75% through the, through the year, the administration have gone, have, haven't done much in terms of spending the capital. The, another one that's of concern, page 52, is the Promoting Growth and Enable Digital Capacity, where open data, this isn't, need an explanation, that open data, publishing of data and related activities did not proceed as planned due to changing project priorities. So, you know, they were going to publish the data, open data, people were supposed to be able to use that, get hold of that and use it for, create businesses and the like, but now it's, it's not going to happen, so an explanation there would be much improvement, much, much preferred by me. Also, Queen Street Mall Public Realm Improvements, realm improvements have been reprioritised. We heard recently that they put out for tender one of the, one of the retail places on the mall, but what, what does that mean, what, what's stated just then? Lower than anticipated, page 53.
Counselor Cumming, your time has expired.
I'm nearly finished.
If, if there's someone who wishes to move an extension of time.
Sorry.
No, 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 I'm on my feet. Don't do it, he's had 30 minutes.
I'm nearly finished, nearly finished.
Come on, someone, give me a motion.
I'm nearly finished, if I could.
Just move.
All right, okay, there's no motion. Thanks, Counselor Cumming.
Thank you.
Further speakers, Counselor Richards.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I rise to speak on item A, the purchase of land at the Polara. The proposed purchase of the land is located at 46 Deveries Road, Polara, for district sports park purposes. With this, the latest land acquisition will be one step closer now to creating the future Polara District Sports Park. As mentioned previously, it's an eight hectares of space available to deliver the park and a target of 12 hectares in total to meet the growing sports and recreational needs of the area, which is part of the Brisbane Priority Infrastructure Plan for 2014. The future sports park is included as part of the Lower Oxley South Neighbourhood Plan, which outlines the development of a diverse, connected and accessible network of parks and recreation facilities to meet the needs of the residents of Polara. As I mentioned, this new sports park will provide additional green space for residents and their children to enjoy by expanding on the mall then 2,100 parks council currently maintains, as well as providing facilities for residents to enjoy an active and healthy lifestyle. The Polara District Sports Park is one of several parks, parks recently completed or planned by council, with the Darien Street Sports Park completed in March 2018, the Mogle District Sports Park out in Pullenvaugh Ward completed in September last year, and construction expected to commence soon on the Wakely District Sports Park. So council is currently in the process of purchasing land for the new sports park and is consulting with residents about the project, with four more properties expected to be purchased soon. Our parks are highly valued by the community and contribute to Brisbane's City Council's vision for 2031, for a clean and green, well-designed, subtropical and active and healthy city. Investment in park infrastructure helps to create exceptional outdoor places to help to maintain or improve our quality of life here in Brisbane. So 46 Deveries Road, Polara, is a 2.5 million dollar investment that plays an important role in helping to deliver diverse and accessible Brisbane parks that continue to add to our enormous green spaces for our community to enjoy. We aim to provide an accessible and diverse network of parks and recreation facilities that meet the needs of Brisbane residents and to have parks that are within walking or cycling distance from home. Investment in park infrastructure helps to create exceptional outdoor places to help to maintain and improve our quality of life here in Brisbane. This parcel of land does contain mature vegetation however, and it is not uncommon for sports parks to contain some areas of mature vegetation, similarly to Mogle District Sports Park. These areas can provide valuable spaces for more informal park infrastructure and trails or shelters. or shelters to just sit and meditate and enjoy the environment. The preservation of significant habitat and mature vegetation will be taken into consideration as part of future master planning for this sports park. So this sports park will be an invaluable piece of infrastructure for the residents of Polara and surrounding areas. And delivering projects like these is another way this Shurina administration is building the unique lifestyle as our city grows, as this administration is committed to protecting Brisbane's lifestyle and green space. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Further speakers, councillor Johnston.
Yes, I rise to speak on items A, B, D, E and F, and I'd ask that items B and C are taken individually, sereatum, for voting purposes.
I'm just going to repeat that back to you, that items B and C are taken individually, sereatum, for voting, is that correct? So B and C separately?
Yes, please. And then D, E and F would be a block, I think, based on what Labour wanted.
Absolutely, please continue.
Yes, thank you. Um, firstly, I just rise to speak on, uh, item A, uh, the purchase of land for, uh, parks at Polara. Look, I think this is great, I'm, I'm certainly in support of more parkland, um, being purchased around the city. Um, I, I want to see it being done equitably, uh, and being done in my ward and, uh, and others' wards as well. Um, you know, as the questions on notice showed us from last week, um, the L N P overwhelmingly pork barrel their own seats, um, and put funding into, uh, my seat or the A L P seat, and that was extremely evident, uh, in the answers to the questions on notice, uh, from last week. Um, uh, certainly, uh, it's interesting, isn't it, in the, um, when I get to more detail about the third budget review, but the third budget review contains the annual dividend for the C B I C, which is being rolled over, this year's dividend hasn't been spent and this council is rolling it over into nineteen twenty. So presumably the Lord Mayor, who made this announcement just a few weeks ago, knew that he had this great big slush fund, um, ready to go, um, and it means he'll have, um, I presume, forty million dollars in the financial year, uh, for parks purposes. So it makes a little bit more sense about what he was promising, um, but knowing that he's rolling over this money because this administration's not been able to spend it this year, um, makes it even more important that with such a large pool of funds available, that it is spent equitably around the city. Uh, so I say, um, good, good for Polara, excellent outcome for them, um, but that, uh, that level of investment needs to be shown in all suburbs and all wards around this city. Briefly with respect to the Cooperu and District Neighbourhood Plan, again, it is a tale of two cities. Um, I, you know, I, I've watched this roll go and I've spoken about it previously in here and I've watched this roll gold neighbourhood plan go through and we heard, um, we heard the, uh, Lord Mayor speak about it earlier, uh, it's talking about the revitalisation of areas, protecting characters, adding more character areas. Um, it talked about listening to the people who made submissions and making changes that reflected the views of their community. Um, that's, that's the complete opposite of what happened with respect to the two neighbourhood plans, uh, in my area, particularly the Sherwood Graceville neighbourhood plan. Um, our submissions were ignored, um, you know, projects haven't been done that were promised in the enhancement plan, um, we're copying all this, uh, growth of these, um, ugly, uh, five and six-storey buildings that should not be being built and there's no infrastructure to support them. Uh, and the Fairfield neighbourhood plan, um, certainly there's no investment in any of the necessary infrastructure needed in my area. So, um, you know, I'm pleased that areas, uh, more character areas are being added to the parcel of areas protected in our city, but again, it's not been done equitably. Um, you know, if there are suburbs that are five Ks from the city that are being protected, why are suburbs ten and twelve kilometres from the city being ripped apart, um, by this L N P administration? It is unfair, it is unreasonable, and the community out my way is very unhappy about it. Uh, briefly with respect to the third budget review, um, and the annual, uh, operating plan and quarterly financial report, I want to start with the, uh, quarterly financial report. Um, and the first thing I'll say is the finance chairman is brand new, um, however, he's been the deputy finance chairman, so he certainly has had his fingers on this one. Um, every time we have a debate about this, the L N P say, there's nothing to see here, this is a snapshot in time, it's not important, but the, the big takeaway for anybody listening at home and the journalists sitting out in their John Miller room, um, it, it's every single time. Like, if it was a one-off where things are going really badly wrong, you'd go, yeah, yeah, I can accept that, you know, there might be a few issues, but every single time we have a budget review and a quarterly report, this administration's inept financial management is laid bare for everybody in the city to see. And there's a couple of big-ticket items I want to start with and then just speak to a few issues, um, in the third budget, uh, report. Page sixteen of the, uh, quarterly financial report, I mean, this is an absolutely damning indictment upon an administration who clearly are just tired, they've given up. Um, the third quarterly report, um, you know, the third quarter is the engine room, it's when you kick the goals, it's when you set yourself up for, um, you know, winning the game. This administration's gone into sleep mode, snooze mode. Um, only fifty-two percent, fifty-two percent of what has been budgeted has actually been delivered this year. That's half, half. So this administration has just scraped over the line of delivering half of their promised administration. Um, now, in three weeks' time, um, the Lord Mayor is going to stand up here and he's going to promise the world, um, but what we can see is that this is not being delivered. And time and time again, projects are being rolled over, rephased, um, you know, in some cases in the third, um, budget review, for two years, they're being rolled over. Um, so whilst this is at March and perhaps there's been some improvement since March, um, it is just, um, it's just not a sustainable way to run, uh, a service delivery organisation if you are unable to deliver on barely half of your agenda for the year. That is a massive, massive problem. And every area, um, of our city is underspent, except customer service, um, where they are, they're over, you know, they're over, um, their budget, um, because, I mean, we are a service delivery organisation. Um, so the people who are out there saying, this is what we're going to do, they're doing their job, it's, it's the people who have to go out there and do the work that, for whatever reason, whether it's, um, uh, lack of resources, and I think it's a lack of people would be my observation, is a big problem, there's a lack of funding, um, for everything, and you can see, I cannot believe we're rolling over things like tree trimming and footpaths and drainage and all of these everyday things, that this council, with all of its expertise, in the past nearly one hundred years, we should be delivering like clockwork, and this council can't even trim trees properly. I mean, I know we're waiting out in our area for dozens of requests, um, it, it, it just, you need to do better. This is a service delivery organisation and the services are not being delivered on the ground. And that's, um, what shows up in the third budget review, um, and there's a few issues that I particularly want to talk about, uh, in that. Firstly, and the big ticket item in there, is that, um, our debt is going to skyrocket, um, for our net financial, uh, liabilities ratio from ninety-eight percent in this year to two hundred and eighty-one point four percent in next year's budget. Now, that's an apples-to-apples comparison under the new accounting changes. Those changes are to more fully reflect all of our, uh, liabilities and assets, uh, on our accounts. Now, that's a more than threefold increase in the debt levels that this council has to service. That means more money to pay interest and less money on actual services. And there is no plan, um, and I'm on page eight of the, uh, of the third budget review, um, there is no plan to pay down this, um, debt in the future, uh, following year, two hundred and seventy-six percent, two hundred and sixty-five percent, it just goes on and on and on. Um, so, you know, from, from, from an organisation that a few years ago was debt-free to an organisation that's going to see a threefold jump in debt, um, this financial year coming, um, you know, that is, that is a real worry without any plan to pay it down. Now, I don't know what that's going to fund, the green bridges, I don't know, we're, I don't know, we haven't heard anything about it, but let me tell you, the residents of Brisbane, following along at home, debt is about to skyrocket. And it is clear that council is not delivering on the essential services, uh, that our city needs. Um, for example, uh, there's eleven million dollars in cycling infrastructure carryovers, eleven million dollars. There's over ten million dollars in, um, blowouts for up to two years for ferry terminal constructions and the construction of new city cats. There's, they're five million dollars behind on the signature project, the Brisbane Metro. Uh, the Kings and Smith Drive is carrying over sixteen million dollars, is that an extra sixteen million? Is that the money that's already been announced? We know the Lord Mayor doesn't like to tell us, um, you know, the zip line's a good example, he tells it's a million and it's really two million. Um, there are, uh, massive problems with even the small but important suburban projects with carryovers to, um, you know, those little street projects that we need, um, millions of dollars in carryovers there. And, and, this is, this is just astonishing, I mean, a few weeks ago, Julian Simmons was publicly saying, um, that the Moghl Road Coonan Street intersection was, quote, shovel-ready. This administration's rolling over the planning money, not actually...
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired.
I rise to speak in support of item A, and in respect of this particular property, there are many different nuances that, um, have not come to light yet in this chamber. The family who owned this particular block were the second family to settle into Frees Road, Polara, and back in the, the stages when Polara was being originally developed, the first family settling in each street actually had the opportunity to name the street, um, after their surname. So there are a lot of, um, families that have been in the area for many, many years, and this particular family has got a very strong and close connection to the suburb of Polara. In fact, um, Daryl Reimer grew up on this property. He was a student at Polara State School. As he reached adulthood, he worked in the area of environmental concern, so much so he received an award in the eighties from the then Premier of Queensland for his work with, um, fauna con, um, fauna conservation, and he went on to do a lot of turtle research. Unfortunately, in nineteen ninety-two, whilst on one of those turtle expeditions, Daryl and his partner went missing and were never located. It has been through the process of the Lower Oxley Creek South Neighbourhood Plan raised with me the request from the community that potentially through the future development of the suburb, whether it be through environmental corridors, parks, or in this case with the district sports park, that there be consideration given to naming some open space after Daryl Reimer. The whole concept of ensuring this legacy lives on is certainly in relation to the fact that Daryl cared so sincerely for the environment, and having it within that Oxley Creek corridor is extremely significant. This need for a district sports park is also quite intrinsic in the development of this suburb. There are many young families choosing to settle here, and through not only the Paradise Wetlands Neighbourhood Plan and the Lower Oxley Creek South Neighbourhood Plan and the Lower Oxley Creek North Neighbourhood Plan that I have been involved with, I know that the people of that area were focused on making sure that as the suburb developed, they had the facilities that were needed for a growing community. Now, the whole neighbourhood planning process came about because former Premier Bly decided that the Oxley Wedge needed to be developed to house six to ten thousand homes, and that was thrust upon this council. But through the proper planning processes, we have engaged with the residents, we have looked at the outcomes and we are now seeing the development of the suburb. It is important that we do plan for the future, it is important to give residents certainty when they've been living on large acreage blocks for many years, and it is important that future residents of that area do have the services and facilities that they will require for a growing community. So I think that this district sports park will certainly, once it's completed, have significant use, it will be well supported by the local community, there are many young families settling in the area, and in fact, Polara State School is already exceeding its targeted enrolments, um, for a number of years ahead of where it should be. So we have a lot of young families there, a district sports park will certainly help us to facilitate an active and healthy lifestyle for the children growing up in our suburbs, and this is a great addition for the southwestern corridor of Brisbane. I commend this item to the chamber.
Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I rise to speak on, uh, item B, Cooperu and District Neighbourhood Plan, uh, item D and possibly item F as well. Um, so firstly, on the Cooperu and District Neighbourhood Plan, this has, um, been litigated quite a bit, um, through this chamber, this is obviously the last, um, stage that this neighbourhood plan is going through, uh, so our views on this are well-known in this chamber. Um, it is refreshing, though, to, um, to hear the views of the, the new councillor for that area, or for Cooperu anyway, uh, in the, um, South East Advertiser, uh, where councillor Cunningham has said the, um, the controversial plan, uh, is going to leave her with quite a challenge, uh, uh, and is going to be really tough, but she's going to give it her best shot to sell, uh, to sell this controversial plan to her local community. Uh, I'm sure she will, um, but this is a suboptimal neighbourhood plan, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, it's not in keeping with the central tenants of the so-called blueprint, uh, for planning here in Brisbane that we supported in good faith, uh, particularly where that blueprint talks about rezoning emerging communities' land for low density, uh, we haven't seen that occur, uh, particularly, um, and the Lord Mayor did mention this area, the Stephens Mountain area, uh, we're seeing, um, again, uh, as we said last time, uh, through that community activism over there, um, some of that, um, area saved, uh, from development, but certainly not all of it, uh, and we're going to see a whole heap of development, uh, through there. Uh, it is a, a missed opportunity when it comes to planning for extra growth, particularly around public transport infrastructure, new parks, green spaces, uh, bike lanes, bikeways, uh, and all those other things that get people moving around their community to deal with the growth that has occurred, uh, and will continue to, to occur, uh, in this area. Um, and it also sees, uh, a expansion of the CR2, uh, Character Residential Two zoning, uh, which we know inevitably means more townhouses and units crammed into the backyards of character homes. So those streets that are largely have intact character housing, that the blueprint in this administration said, uh, that they would be protecting, uh, we're seeing whole swathes of this area rezoned from character residential to character residential two, which will mean more townhouses and units in backyards, uh, in character housing areas. Uh, so, uh, the administration likes to go out there and talk big about character protection, uh, and highlight that on one document, but in another document, uh, they are, uh, giving the green light, uh, to developers to come in and carve out backyards, uh, in character areas. So this is a neighbourhood plan that certainly had some improvements, some very hard-won improvements, uh, by that community from its, uh, first iteration through to where it is now, uh, but in our view, it certainly, uh, doesn't, uh, it doesn't meet the needs of that community going forward, so we will not be supporting that today. Um, just picking up on the third, uh, budget review, uh, councillor Johnston, uh, touched on some of these items here, uh, and, uh, I hope that, um, a suitable explanation will be given, particularly around the, uh, ten and a half million dollars, uh, in, um, delays to constructing key bikeway links, uh, in Brisbane suburbs. We were told this morning in committee that two of those, uh, projects were, uh, one, the Jim Sawley Bikeway, uh, which is just under a million dollars, uh, and some trust fund underspends, uh, of just under two million dollars. Uh, so there is still seven million dollars worth of bikeway projects that, uh, we hope will, uh, certainly be explained to the people of Brisbane why those are not being delivered. Uh, likewise, in the, um, programme area, um, enhancing the ferry infrastructure network, there's nine million dollars, uh, being pushed out by two years. Uh, again, you know, picking up on what councillor, uh, Johnston said, this is, uh, as, you know, the administration says, it's a point in time, well, it's a bad, a bad snapshot in time of this administration's mismanagement, uh, of the budget here in Brisbane. And it is always a bad snapshot in time when they are in charge of this budget. Now, on to item F, the membership of the Oversight Consultancy Special Committee. This is a really troubling committee, this Ghost Committee, which is made up of two LMP councillors, that doesn't report to this chamber, we're not sure where it reports, but it has the oversight and the carriage of recommending some pretty serious amounts of money being spent by this council. Now, to have a committee that is dealing with contracts that could be worth hundreds of millions of dollars of ratepayers' money, being tied up in secrecy like this, is not, is not a good outcome for the people of Brisbane. I think if people understood that there was a committee of two LMP councillors that reported nowhere, that could recommend or not particular contractors getting consultancy work through council, that could potentially be worth hundreds of millions of dollars of ratepayers' money, I think people would start hearing alarm bells ringing in their heads, Mr Chair. It is these types of committees that can lead to corruption. It is these types of committees where there is not proper oversight, where there is not proper reporting, and not proper membership, that can lead to corruption.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order, councillor Adams.
As a member of that board until this is passed, I am highly offended and I ask that he withdraw that comment.
Yeah, I agree. I think that you've made your point, councillor Cassidy. Could you please keep your comments within proportion?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chair. As I said, these, this committee is very troubling, and these types of committees are not good for openness and accountability and transparency when it comes to hundreds of millions of dollars of ratepayers' funding. We have attempted over previous years to make this committee a bipartisan committee between the administration and the opposition. We have also attempted to have an independent person put on to this committee as well. That happened last year. At every opportunity that we have given this administration to make sure that this committee is as open and transparent as it possibly can be, they have rejected that at every step. So we can't in good conscience and on behalf of the people of Brisbane support this committee in its current form. I'm sure it has a very important role to play, but it's done behind closed doors. This is the most secretive committee in the most secretive council in Australia, and I think people would be aboard at, at knowing what goes on in this place, and we certainly won't be supporting that item today.
Further speakers, councillor Cunningham.
Chair, I rise to speak on item B of the Cooperu and Districts Neighbourhood Plan. And first of all, I'd like to say that councillor Cassidy has verblled me. What I said was that residents raised concerns with me about development, and I have heard those concerns. In fact, council has heard those concerns, and their feedback has helped shape this plan. The plan area covers about half of my ward of Cooperu.
Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
Blame to me, Miss, represented.
Noted. Councillor Cunningham.
The plan area covers about half of my ward of Cooperu, and in particular, my home patch, so I'm delighted to be here this evening and see it come before council. I'd like to commend the officers on what has been a long and thorough process. The first draft strategy was released for community consultation in October twenty sixteen, with formal consultation running from the sixteenth of April to the eighth of June twenty eighteen. Council officers received over four hundred and twenty submissions during that formal statutory public consultation period, and a significant amount of feedback was also previously received. The neighbourhood plan largely focuses change on the centres along Logan Road Corridor, the Greenslopes Private Hospital, and around the Greenslopes Busway Station, as well as the areas that are within the low-medium residential zone with the traditional building character overlay. Chair, what I love about my area is the balance between old and new, public transport, accessibility bikeways, and busways. The diversity and choices add to the appeal, and this plan strikes that balance by protecting our local lifestyle while also allowing for increased population growth in a considered and deliberate way. As the owner and inhabitant of a character residential property at Greenslopes, I am delighted to see many outcomes which are aimed at protecting the local heritage and character in the plan area. The tin and timber, Spanish mission, and Californian bungalow style of homes within the area is quintessentially Brisbane, and I believe protections afforded in this plan are deserved and will ensure future generations enjoy our historic dwellings and unique streetscape. While I'm fortunate to live in my own house now, that has not always been the case. For instance, in years gone by, and especially when I was a student, it was important to have access to affordable accommodation options close to public transport and services. Through this plan, growth areas and unit development will be consolidated to key locations near public transport, shops, services, and open space. This will allow for some housing choice and diversity in the community. However, much of the whole area remains unchanged as low-density suburban development or is further protected in the character residential zone. We see an increase in the number of properties into the character residential zone, which now amounts to nearly six thousand. And there are specific outcomes aimed at protecting local heritage and character, including an additional ten new heritage places and thirteen new dwellings included in the pre-nineteen eleven building overlay. Overall, there will be a net increase in the number of pre-nineteen forty-six properties that are protected by the traditional building character overlay. There are new provisions to protect heritage places, including that development next door to a heritage place may be accessible, must respect the values of the heritage place, and not detract from the streetscape. This is truly a plan which recognises the value that residents place on local history. Chair, as the mother of a young son, I could not be more pleased to see almost six hectares of land added to the conservation zone at Stephens Mountain Greenslopes. The plan recognises the environmental values of Stephens Mountain and confirms that most of the site is not appropriate for development. Any development on Stephens Mountain is to retain the landscape, habitat, and ecological values of the site, which is so close to our beautiful city and has amazing views to both the north and south. The following zoning pattern will apply at Stephens Mountain. Retain the portion of land owned by the Department of Transport and Main Roads as special purpose zone. Rezone the former quarry portion, approximately one point three five hectares, owned by council, from special purpose zone to emerging community zone, and change the remaining area from special purpose zone to conservation zone, a total of five point eight two hectares. A precinct of a portion of the conservation zone will also allow park work to be exempt from development approvals, providing future potential for the community to share in this special place. I applaud the addition of this new conservation zone, and I am delighted to see an additional forty-eight established trees will be protected from being removed by placing them within the significant landscape tree overlay. This is an exciting time to be in Cooperu Ward, with everything you could ever need right at your fingertips. The plan identifies areas along Logan Road, Cavendish Road, and Greenslopes Mall as places for further future growth, adding to the vibrant activity centres they have become for thousands of residents. In summary, Chair, this plan will allow for growth in and around existing centres and maintains character and low-density residential development through most of the area.
Point of order, Mr Chair. Point of order, councillor Shree.
Will councillor Cunningham take a clarificatory question?
Sorry.
Will councillor Cunningham just take a clarification question?
Would you take a question?
No, thank you.
No, she won't.
It's a great example.
Councillor Cunningham.
Sorry, Mr Chair. In summary, I believe this plan will allow for growth in and around existing centres and maintains character and low-density residential development through most of the area. It's a great example of how this administration is both building and protecting Brisbane. I commend the work of the Planning Chair, councillor Burke, the officers who worked hard on this plan, and I look forward to its adoption.
Councillor Cassidy, you had a misrepresentation. Please keep it. Comments limited to the misrepresentation at hand.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Councillor Cunningham said, I verblled her. I just quoted directly from her local newspaper, which said that the controversial-
Further speakers? Charles? Councillor Strunk?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Listen, I rise to speak briefly on items D and E. Mr Chair, it's always interesting to look through a third budget review. I think this is my third of this LMP council, and there are a number of things that just don't look quite right, the ones that I've been able to identify. The third review and the annual, annual operation plan can be a telling document, which is a good indicator on how the programs are, are going. No doubt, we'll hear from the Lord Mayor and the finance chair that this, and I echo the words of councillor Johnston, that this will just be a snapshot in time with three months to go, nothing to see here. Mr Chair, my leader has taken the time to identify and comprehensively identify many, many of the issues within the report that we have issues with. So I won't spend much time in re-litigating them, but will highlight a few that were important to me. Page two-
Councillors, if you're having a private conversation, you just take it outside for me, please. Councillor Strunk.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Page two of the budget financial statement under expenses, my question is what caused the decrease in the reported expenses for material and services of a hundred and forty-four million dollars? Was it at the expense of services or project delays? Again, on page two, it says that the developer contributions are increasing to, by thirty-four percent to a hundred and thirty-four million from a budget figure of a hundred million. But if we look at page eleven of the statement of comprehensive income, you report the developer contributions of seventy-two million, which is under, which is under the stated budget of a hundred million. So can you explain the inconsistency of those two reported statements? Mr Chair, I would also like to ask why we are rephasing two hundred and forty thousand dollars in the citywide litter prevention project listed on page thirty-nine, sorry, of the Clean Green Sustainable City Project variances. Now, this, this came, I, I, when I saw this, I just couldn't believe it, because just this last weekend, the World Mission Society Church of God was out in my ward again. They, they come once a month, and this time, we were at the Thrust Street Park, and this, this, this organisation has made a major commitment to my ward to come out once a month to undertake litter clean-up. So I, I really, I just wonder why we are rephasing this, this sort of money, right, for litter prevention? So if, if that could be answered, I would be greatly appreciated, because we shouldn't be asking our organisations to go out and do work that's really council work as a volunteer, especially if we're rephasing or pushing that money that could have been spent that year into another year. Mr Chair, if we look at page forty-two of the same document, we see the guiding Brisbane's development had a much lower than anticipated revenue of five point two million, so I ask what has caused this to occur? Mr Chair, page fifty-three of the same document, it looks like the Asia-Pacific Screen Awards has taken another hit to sponsorship of four hundred thousand, which would worry, should worry all of us in this chamber. This has been the case for a few years now, and it makes me wonder if our marketing strategy needs a, a fresh pair of eyes. At this rate, Mr Chair, we may not have the sponsorship to sustain this headline Brisbane City Council event. Mr Chair, I look forward to hearing the responses to what I've raised and as what, as, as well as what my leader has raised, has raised as well. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Further speakers, councillor Burke.
Thanks very much, Mr Chair, and I just rise to enter the debate on item B and D and E if I get a chance. The Cooperu and Districts Neighbourhood Plan, item B, which is before us today, is here now for the final endorsement of council. It has been off to the state government for their second state interest review, and it's here for adoption, Mr Chair. This has been a process that started a long time ago. It started way back, back in two thousand and sixteen, I think I've got it in front of me here, Mr Chair, and has been done in consultation and engagement with the residents of the Cooperu and surrounding suburbs for the draft strategy, for the iterations of the actual neighbourhood plan, and for all of the statutory consultation processes that go on top of, the extra engagement that this council does as part of its neighbourhood planning process, Mr Chair. It is an award-winning process, as the council chamber has heard many times, and it is one, Mr Chair, that we see being rolled out across the city and has delivered us a number of neighbourhood plans across the city. What we've seen, though, this afternoon again, is the Labor councillor stand up in this place, and despite the leader of the opposition had thirty minutes, did not say one sentence about this neighbourhood plan. We know that he's heading for retirement. It's been councillor Cassidy who's been leading the charge now for some weeks. He didn't even say boo about this neighbourhood plan. Did not have one thing to offer as the leader of the opposition in this city. But what we did see is, again, the Australian Labor Party not putting forward any alternative. So what they're happy to do, week in, week out, in this place, is go, well, you can't put density there, you can't do that there, you can't put density here. Well, where are people going to live in this city, Mr Chair, and through you, to those remaining councillors of the Australian Labor Party that are in this place, if you cannot put density around the growth nodes and the transport nodes that sit inside this neighbourhood plan? If not there, then where? Front up to the community and tell them, through you, Mr Chair, to the leader of the opposition, and the Labor Party councillors who are here, where? Where are they going to put the density? And I take that interjection from councillor Griffiths, because councillor Griffiths just helpfully went, the Jamboree Ward. Yeah, councillor Griffiths, that's why, when we did the neighbourhood plan there, we rezoned areas around the major train station at Dara four, five stories. Oh, yeah, you put density around major transport nodes. It's a pretty simple public transport idea, it's a pretty simple planning idea, through you, Mr Chair, to, to the council for Maruka Ward. So here you have the southeast busway, that is going to have metro services running along it, high speed, high frequency, turn-up-and-go services, and why wouldn't you put density there, there to use that service? You know, the Labor Party like to preach about being for the forgotten people, for housing affordability. Well, where are you going to put people in this city? You're going to push them to the outskirts, through you, Mr Chair, to the leader of the opposition, if he was here, and to the Labor councillors that remain in the council chamber? Where? We never hear an alternative plan. But what we do hear is this constant negativity where we've gone out and engaged with the community, where we've spoken to them, and listened to their views and concerns, and then appropriately looked at how we can support and facilitate not only the increased density that we need because of the state government's regional plans and all those additional dwellings that we have to meet that are a statutory target for this council, but also to support the growing business community in this city. Because I'll tell you what, I know, having spoken to the current councillor for Stones Corner and for the Cooperu Ward, and previous councillor for that area, that some of those businesses down there are struggling. I know, having spoken to the councillor for the Deegan Ward, who wanted a neighbourhood plan for Sandgate, because the businesses are struggling, they need some increased density for more people to help support the business centres. And so we've listened. And so we have listened, and so we are trying to respond and help support small business, help provide housing choice, and help support the growth of our city and manage the growth of our city to protect what we love about our city, to protect the tin and timber, to protect the Californian bungalows, to protect those inner-city suburbs that have a particular charm and character about them, but also acknowledging that we have a responsibility to make sure we adequately plan for the growth of this city and accommodate the people that want to move. Because I'll tell you what, there's a lot of people that want to come to Brisbane, and I don't blame them, because it is a fantastic place to live. But we have to make sure that we're planning for and making sure that we accommodate the growth that's a requirement by the state government through their regional plan. And this neighbourhood plan helps to do that. But at the same time, this neighbourhood plan also makes sure that we're protecting the character, as councillor Cunningham said. And councillor Cassidy can go for his little, you know, verbaling attacks that he likes to do in this place, because the words he used are not councillor Cunningham's words in that article. They're not her words. He likes to try and stand up and verbal people in this place, but he's got to be very careful, because he misquotes people, and if you check the article, they're not the words that councillor Cunningham said. And so you've got to, you've got to play it with a straight-back councillor, Cassidy, through you, Mr Chair, because if you want to have a fair-dinking debate about town planning, if you want to be fair-dinking with the people, then you guys on that other side in the Australian Labor Party would actually stump up on how you're going to accommodate growth and density across this city, something you have not done in the eleven years I've been here, something that you're not prepared to have a conversation with the people of Brisbane about. Because when we've done it in the past through City Plan and through Plan Your Brisbane, all you've done is criticise and claim that it was an engagement exercise- all you've done is criticize and claim that it was an engagement exercise and a publicity exercise when it was a fair dinkin' engagement with the people of Brisbane on what they would like to see and how they'd like to see their city grow. This neighborhood plan.
Councillors will be heard in silence. Councillor Burke.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. And again, we just see the childish nature that councillors take the actual genuine, genuine feedback of the residents of Brisbane in, because we got thousands of engagements out of that process with actual comments and feedback, words, words of the residents of Brisbane about how they would like to see their city grow and how they'd like to see it develop and what they love about it and what they'd like to see protected. And that's the feedback that's of value, Mr. Chairman, as part of that. And so as part of this neighborhood plan, as councillor Cunningham said, there is 10 new neighborhood, 10 new heritage places. There's 13 new dwellings being put into the pre-1911 overlay. There is six hectares nearly of new park or conservation land. So when the Labor Party voted against this neighborhood plan this evening, they are voting against six new hectares of park and conservation land for the city of Brisbane. That's what they're doing. They don't want to see more parks and conservation areas in the Cooperu area. They are voting, going to vote against that today. There's also additional street trees that are being protected as part of the significant landscape tree overlay. And on top of that, there is a large number of properties that are being moved from either traditional building character overlay into that, or they're being moved into the character residential overlay as well. And we heard councillor Cassidy talk about this furphy around the character overlay and particular character infill. The provisions inside this neighborhood plan, as we said back when it came back to this place before it went to the state for its second state interest review, are some of the tightest provisions around character infill that this council has. We've adopted the same provisions that we have in similar neighborhood plans close by, and they actually put stricter controls and currently sit inside the city plan on how you are able to do infill development in the character infill area. And the criticism that we continue to see from those opposite just shows that they don't have a plan for managing the growth in this city. Because if you can't put increases in, in density into areas like this, where do they go? How do you facilitate that growth in the city? How, how are you actually going to manage the growth in the city going forward? These are some real big questions and challenges for the Australian Labor Party that they need to put forward at some point. At some point, they have to front up and have that conversation, whether it's in here as part of a debate, or whether it's as part of the election campaign next year, Mr. Chairman. But at some point, they have to put their cards on the table because the residents of Brisbane are very keen to know this. We have a very clear path on how we help to work with the community to develop and do these neighborhood plans, how we engage with them, and how we respond by making sure that we do appropriate increases in the zonings around those transport nodes, around those shopping precincts, and protect the suburbs, protect the tin and timber, protect the character that we see. And this neighborhood plan, again today, goes a long way to doing that. There is the recommendations out of the blueprint in here. We wouldn't be putting so many buildings into the character zoning or into the traditional building zoning or heritage listing them, or getting rid of some of the EC land that's in this plan if we weren't following the recommendations of the blueprint, Mr. Chairman. And I just commend this neighborhood plan to the chamber, and I thank all of the council officers, all of the community members, and all of the organizations that have involved in this process. This neighborhood plan, I know, will keep the residents of the Cooperu and surrounding suburbs in good stead for many years.
Further speakers, councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's always interesting, oh, sorry, I'm going to speak on item A and item B. It's always interesting to hear councillor Burke speak, and it was very interesting to hear him speak about the Cooperu and District Neighborhood Plan and what a great job his administration has done in relation to planning across the city. And I invite him to, as I have previous chairpersons to numerous public meetings that, that I attend where residents are furious about the neighborhood planning process and furious about your city plan.
Councillors will be heard in silence.
So it's very, it's very interesting to hear councillor Burke defend the city plan, but we know and he knows that people are unhappy with this administration and what it's done with planning in this city. And we know and he knows that people are angry about it. And they're ready to pass on their thoughts to the administration with regards the poor way planning has been done and the way density has been inequitably distributed across this city. I also want to speak on item B, oh, no, sorry, item A, which is a proposed purchase of land for district sports park purposes located at Polara. Now, there's, Polara's actually, it's been interesting here, different people get up, and I know people have history with the area, but Polara's actually in Maruka Ward. And this is at the far end of my ward, but it is one of the fastest growing areas in the city. And at the moment, there's thousands, thousands of home sites that have been approved or that are currently being developed down there at Polara. And each week, there won't be an application go, that won't, that will go through my office where we're seeing hundreds more, hundreds more applications for subdivision. This area is growing massively. And in the time that I've represented it, it's been significant, the number of people that are down there, but the very high expectation they have when they move into a new suburb, they expect public transport, they expect park facilities, they expect the roads done, they expect footpaths. It's an expectation. And that's what we've sold to them in terms of them moving to that part of the city. And we're so far behind in our delivery for those people, it's not funny. So I hear the Lord Mayor say, well, this is great, we've done a great thing here, look at, oh, no, fantastic. This has taken two years. From the time this resident approached me to the time we're purchasing this property has taken two years. And we still only have enough land to do half the regional park. We still only have half the land, so we still haven't got the other half. And there's no plans in place for what we're actually going to do on there. There's no plans in place.
Councillors will be heard in silence.
Thank you.
Councillor Griffiths.
Yes, as I said, thank you councillor Cook, there are no plans in place for this regional park. So yes, this is a good purchase, but we should be getting on and purchasing the rest of this land. And given that that's taken us two years to purchase this piece of land, I'm assuming it's going to take us another two years to purchase the rest of it or another piece of land. And that's too long for these residents to wait. So, Mr. Chairman, I welcome this, but once again, I think the administration is really lacking in the way it's delivering for our residents and particularly our new residents in our growing areas of the city. Thank you.
Further speakers, there being councillor Cooper.
You nearly missed me, Mr. Chair.
I did, please, please continue.
Disappointed. Missed my opportunity. Happy to speak on items D and E, there are a couple of questions raised in relation to these items, in particular about the ICB with that issue. I think that councillor Cumming was concerned that transurban Queensland were not paying council for work that was undertaken. In fact, there was actually additional work undertaken as part of the ICB upgrade. We had them undertake some work, which was the signalization of the Hurston Street offramp. And that was additional work that they undertook on our behalf, so that equated to about $1.4 million. So that would have been money that would have come to council under that agreement, but we undertook, if they did that work for us, that that would be something that obviously council wouldn't be receiving. And I know councillor Howard has been very happy to see those lights in place and seen a significant improvement in, in the connectivity up there on, in that vicinity of the hospital. So that's just clarification of that particular one. He was asking also in relation to Kingsford Smith Drive, saying that there was a $16 million carryover. In fact, if you have a look at the information, it's, the money is moving. So the money moves from the 18, 19 year, it skips the 19, 20 year, and it moves to the 20, 21 year. So it actually isn't carried over the two years, but it actually shifts into that period. It is, as this chamber well-known, well knows, a consequence of the geotechnical difficulties that council has unfortunately seen in that vicinity of the Crescent Road-Hamilton location, and that is why there is a change. It is just a movement from that, that financial year to the 20, 21 financial year. And, and the other question I think that councillor Cumming had was with respect to a range of other projects, particularly the crew projects. He was concerned that council wasn't getting on and delivering these projects. I think it's important to note that this is basically a rolling program. So these are projects that are suggested by local councillors, by the community, by us reviewing the road network and how to ensure that it is working as effectively as possible. In the congestion busting projects, basically, there's a temporary underspend. It's basically, there's been a lower than anticipated labor costs, and also we've had one particular project that is put on hold. That is basically because it does not meet the criteria for this project. So to be eligible for this project, it has to be expenditure of equal or less than $250,000. So these are small projects. Some projects are anticipated that they could fit in that category, but further investigation means that it actually could be in excess. Sometimes we see far in excess of that figure, therefore that then goes to a different line item area for consideration in future to be funded as part of that program. They also have to, have to be supported by the local community and by the local councillor. And in some cases, these projects are considered by the officers, and when consultation is undertaken with local councillors or the local community, they may not support it. It could require removal of trees, for example, it could mean some sort of changes to arrangements that people are not happy to support. But when these projects are not able to be undertaken, then we move on to the next range of projects. There is always projects coming up to be investigated. They are investigated if they meet those criteria, so there's a first rate of return that has to be delivered, so it has to be good value for money for council. If they meet that criteria of sitting in the $250,000 or less in terms of the size of the project, and they must be able to be supported by the local community and the local councillor. If they meet those requirements, if they deliver benefits to our road network, then we undertake those projects. But there is always a range of projects that are being moved up and through into that program for consideration. And if they do meet those requirements, then council will be undertaking those projects. So just do not be, do not be concerned, councillor Cumming. If you have suggestions for that, and I know we write to councillors fairly regularly asking if there are suggestions that, of projects that might be eligible for that particular initiative to be put forward and investigated by the officers. Thank you.
Further speakers, councillor Shree.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I rise to speak on item B and perhaps also items D and E. Just firstly, with the Cooperu and Districts Neighborhood Plan, I'm frequently disappointed at the shallow tone of debate in this chamber around planning and development. And I think that's probably to some extent exemplified in, in the discussion around this neighborhood plan. I see councillor Burke doesn't seem to be in the chamber at the moment, but he, he issued that challenge of saying, okay, well, where, where do we want to put people? And actually, I think Cooperu is, and the Greenslopes area is, one of those areas that it, it isn't necessarily inappropriate to densify. I think there is a case for some infill development around the suburbs of Cooperu and Greenslopes. But I think what residents frequently object to is the style of development and the flow and impacts of that development. So it's not that necessarily townhouses and granny flats are fundamentally evil or terrible things, but the specific styles of townhouse development and infill development that we're seeing at the moment frequently yield suboptimal design outcomes. So we see townhouses built right to the boundaries, we see excessive amounts of concrete and impervious services, we see lots of established trees and unusable green, green spaces and backyards. We also see generally fairly ugly designs and buildings that I would often, I would describe as McMansions described as townhouses. So they're essentially, the bedrooms are much, much bigger than they need to be, the common spaces, living spaces and transitionary outdoor spaces are a lot smaller than they ought to be. So it's not necessarily that medium density infill is a bad thing, but that the specific kinds of development that this neighborhood plan allows are, are a missed opportunity and a well below what the public should reasonably expect. So I think really that our conversation needs to become a bit more nuanced, and we need to talk more seriously about what, what level of setbacks are appropriate, what, what height limits are appropriate, rather than just saying, oh, yes, we're, we're very supportive of all townhouses, or no, we're very opposed to all townhouses. Let's have a nuanced conversation about how we can get the balance right. And I don't think this particular plan does get the balance right, because I think the styles of townhouse development it allows will, will lead to the loss, as I said, of established trees, but also to excessive site cover in areas where those green corridors are particularly important. In addition to that, the other big concern residents often raise with this sort of infill development is the increased impact it has on traffic congestion. And the point remains that if you're going to densify a neighborhood, you also need to make sure that there, there's improved, improvements to active transport and public transport, not just the, the big metro projects and the, and the transport corridors leading people in and out of the city, but local connectivity, local pedestrian and cycling connectivity to shops and schools and local destinations, as well as those local bus routes. And I think that still isn't sufficiently part of this conversation. The other big concern I still have with the Cooperu Neighborhood Plan is, of course, the desecration that's occurring to the bushland area at Stevens Mountain. Obviously, I kicked up a big stink about this a while ago, and we successfully managed to have a fair chunk of that bushland area preserved as, as green space. But a large chunk of it is still being rezoned for emerging community, and that's land that should have been protected as green space and, and recognized for its significant ecological values. I was a little bit concerned by councillor Cunningham's comments that it's actually council-owned land which is being rezoned from green, from, it's currently green space and it's being rezoned for emerging community. And the council hasn't clearly stated what it plans to do with that land. I hope I'm wrong and that a councillor will get up and correct me, but what I've heard in this chamber today is that part of the land which is being rezoned for emerging community is actually owned by Brisbane City Council, and that's deeply concerning to me if that's the case. But even if it's not the case, even if that isn't, land isn't actually owned by council, I still don't think we should be rezoning that vegetated area for emerging community. My comments have been placed on the record before, so I won't harp on about that right now. Just turning to items D and E though, I want to offer a few insights as to why so many council projects seem to be getting delayed or rolled over. And maybe these, these insights might, might be worth the new mayor and the new deputy mayor taking some note of, because I think there's an opportunity to improve the way we deliver some of these projects. And I offer these, these insights in, in good faith in the hope that there'll be some genuine reflection on how we can improve going forward. So what I frequently see with, with projects that are being delivered in my area is that they're, they're announced with almost no public consultation, and then the community is forced into a position where they have to either accept a fairly suboptimal outcome or advocate really, really strongly for changes to be made after the fact. And what that means is that council offices behind the scenes have done a whole bunch, a great deal of initial planning work, initial design work, and then they present it to me as a councillor and to residents for sort of tokenistic feedback. And then there's a need, as a result of that feedback, to make dramatic changes, the project practically has to go back, back to the drawing board, it gets delayed, pushed back, et cetera. Now, it would be much more efficient if before the council offices went so far down the road and did all that design work and did all that initial scoping and planning, that we have a bit more community consultation and planning upfront, so that the initial scope and initial concept designs of these kinds of projects is, is closer to what the residents are willing to accept. I'm thinking here of major park upgrades, definitely some of the major bikeway projects that have happened through my ward. A fairly consistent experience I have is that a lot of the design work is done, mistakes are made, local concerns are overlooked, and then the plans have to be changed dramatically. And that's a key factor that's leading to projects being delayed, rolled over and pushed back. I think a similar concern exists with the congestion busting projects. And through you, Mr. Chair, to the mayor, I'd encourage you to think really carefully about how much money you allocate to these congestion busting projects in future years, because some of them, to me, actually seem like they're going to increase traffic congestion. I've objected to a couple of these congestion busting projects in my neighborhood in the last couple of years because they essentially encourage more people to drive and funnel mall cars through residential areas, which is the opposite of what we should be doing. So maybe we need to start thinking about how we can engage and consult with the community earlier on in the process before we do all the work and before we allocate all that work. money. And then we'll have better quality outcomes that are driven by the community, rather than being driven by public servants who are maybe detached from practical concerns on the ground. I also just wanted to note the ongoing concerns I have about decision-making bottlenecks. And I see this particularly in the news branch, in terms of some of my some of the park projects in my ward, but also with intersection projects, bikeway projects, other transport projects. Frequently, we see that officers brief up to the chair, and then it takes several weeks or, in some cases, months for the chair to pass on that information or to tick off on that so that the councillor and the local community can receive the information. And through you, Mr Chair, I'm particularly directing this comment to the deputy mayor. I'm still waiting on a briefing around the Riverloop Bikeway project. That was allocate the money for that was allocated in the budget, and it's been a year, and I still haven't seen anything in detail. And I think that's a classic example of where officers are doing the work, but they're waiting on a sign-off from someone higher up, whether it's a chair or a branch manager. And those key decision-makers are so snowed under and have so much work across their desk, and they're taking too long to make essential decisions and holding up the entire project. So maybe what we need to be talking about there is decentralising some of that decision-making. If a chair doesn't have time to make a meaningful decision about whether a park upgrade or a pedestrian crushing should go ahead, then maybe leave it up to the local councillor. Maybe decentralise some of that decision-making, because right now, we're waiting months and months to get updates on basic straightforward projects, when instead, the chair could just say, oh, look, I'm going to trust the local councillor's decision on this. If the local councillor is happy with the plan, I'm happy to proceed with it. That's what we do with a lot of the smaller park projects, and that's why, in many cases, they can happen more quickly. But it's those larger projects where senior decision-makers who aren't connected to the local neighbourhood and don't understand the community's local concerns end up holding up the project, because they're required to make a decision and they don't know enough to make a decision confidently. So I really want to emphasise that these rollovers and delays don't need to be happening. And I think a big part of the problem is over-centralisation of decision-making, where the local community and the local councillor are cut out of the process, which means that plans have to be changed repeatedly or that the release of plans is delayed unnecessarily. There's a lot of room for improvement there, and I really think this administration can do a lot better in that respect.
Further speakers, councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I rise to speak on items B, C and F. And I'll start with item F just very briefly. Again, we hear the confected posturing from councillor Cassidy about corruption and secrecy and the most secret committee in council and the no transparency when we've made it very clear what this committee is about. It's not about million-dollar projects and something that's hidden from the community. He's getting confused with the Stores Board Committee, where the Stores Board process, where the officers work through the projects and look at the tender processes and look at those strategic contracting plans that all come to council.
Councillors will be heard in silence. Councillor Adams.
The Oversight Committee is literally that an oversight of consultancies that have come through various portfolios, so the administration can make sure that the rate payer's money is being used wisely and for the best value for money. And actually, the predominant part of the Oversight Committee is actually the Better Brisbane Proposals. And as the commitment I made to this chamber that councillor Allen will continue is that anything that is approved through the Better Brisbane Proposals for trial through to contract comes to the chambers. So there is absolutely no secrecy around this committee and is obviously and clearly the role of the administration councillors within the Finance Committee to have oversight of the officers' decisions around spending rate payers' monies on consultancies. To item B, I just wanted to be heard in silence to start with, Mr Chair, thank you. Item B, which is the Cooperu and Districts neighbourhood plan, I only have a small section of the neighbourhood plan in the Holland Park Ward, about half of the Holland Park suburb, the northern side of Marshall Road. But this section does very clearly focus on the city-shaped values of densities around existing centres, services and facilities along our main corridors, and in this case, Logan Road and a little bit down near the Palm Road, too, where we have our busway and major traffic on the Pacific Motorway. I thank the council officers for the work that they've done over several years for this. We've seen ongoing protection for existing heritage and new heritage listings as well in the Holland Park suburb as well, and that is heritage listings, not just character protections as well. The Hillside Character Precinct has been updated, updated in the fact that the terminology alone no longer exists, but the intent of the Hillside Character Precinct is continued to be reflected in the development outcomes listed in the tables there as well. Main changes for the Holland Park Ward are in the neighbourhood centre precincts, for example, along Coringi Avenue in Taragindi, where the outlines improve public realm. If there's opportunities there with developments that might happen in that small neighbourhood centre precinct. And also the Holland Park Centre, which is a larger district centre, currently zoned two to four stories, is being zoned four to six stories. But we are not expecting this to happen anytime soon. This centre precinct has had a reinvigoration over the last couple of years. It's fantastic to see the numbers of people that are visiting that centre, all during the week, with new coffee shops, new restaurants, new bars, and of course, the continuing favourites there of the Best Bakery and a great local hotel as well. The opportunities we see in this precinct, though, that is, if there is redevelopment, it does allow for the capacity for developers to be able to do basement car parking, which is one of the largest issues that we have in this local area, is that it is becoming a little bit too popular, and the current car parking provisions are very tight for those businesses, and particularly with Logan Road being such a main corridor. So any basement car parking that can be added in future developments is a bonus for that area as well. I would like to thank the Community Reference Group for their many weeks of work, even though it seems like many years ago that they did put in representatives from right across the community that had their say and represented their interest groups across the district plan and the offices for their commitment to engaging with the community. I think it's a great outcome for the Holland Park Board, but also for councillor Cunningham in the Cooperu Ward as well. And lastly, I just wanted to take comments on the store board submission for the Volvo spare parts and associated services. There were some comments from councillor Cummings around this. We have been involved for over a decade now with Volvo being the supplier of our chassis for all of our council buses. So since 2019, all council buses are Volgrin slash Volvo delivered. So therefore, having Volvo's expertise as the supplier of spare parts and associated services makes sure that we have a better value for money for our for our portfolio. The vehicles spend more time on the road, delivering the services rather than off the road with people that may not have the expertise. We know they've got a proven track record on quick technical support, and they are very quick at resolving any issues that we have that arise within our fleet. The contract agrees is for initial 10 years. Councillor Cummings commented that he thought that this might be a little bit too long, but we do need to realise that we will need spare parts for a minimum of at least 20 years. Our bus ages 18 to 21 years before we take them off the road, so we are going to need at least another 20 years of spare parts. And of course, we also need to make sure that we're not using generic spare parts for our buses, because that actually results in a higher cost of whole-of-life cost for our buses as well. So we get a better value for money using the provider that provides the chassis, and we also get appropriate warranty terms without when we don't use our generic parts as well. So Volvo will be focusing on the engine and transmission, brake and steering, fuel emissions and suspensions. Currently, 70% of our fleet are actually Volvo, that is, over 850 buses, and we will be continuing to buy from Volvo, so that will be more than 850 buses in the coming years as well. We are committed to keeping one of the most modern bus fleets in the country and using Volvo as a reliable provider in this field. We'll continue that commitment. It is very clear, now that Volvo has actually moved their head office from Sydney to Brisbane, wow, what have we got here? A procurement for a local business. Imagine that. And councillor Cummings wasn't too sure about the length of time for that one. But since they have moved their head office from Sydney to Brisbane, we have developed the relationship with Volvo. Quarterly meetings with Transport to Brisbane makes more, it's a far more efficient process and relationship. And as clearly indicated, this satisfies innovation, partners and change potential, the maturity of the Volvo systems, as well as the strategic fit and the value for money. I recommend all of these three reports to the chambers.
Further contributions, councillor Howard.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to enter the debate on item D and to respond to a couple of statements by councillor Cumming and councillor Strunk. Councillor Cumming was concerned about the Brisbane Infrastructure Depot consolidation project. So can I say to you, Chair, that the Brisbane Infrastructure Depot consolidation project team is tasked with overseeing a large-scale business transition that impacts a significant portion of council's workforce. And if councillor Cumming examined the 3BR submissions more closely, he would identify that $270,000 of the $290,000 in savings from the Nudgee Road depot project were reallocated to the depot consolidation project team to support its important work. The small overhead costs associated with the now additional expenditure on the depot consolidation project team are spread across other projects in the programme and not just borne by the project the savings were moved to. Councillor Cumming also asked a question about our green waste recycling service, and I'm very pleased to advise that there has been a steady increase of approximately 7,000 services per year, and the current take-up is just over 90,000, which is approximately 20% of our rate payers. So that is such a good news story. Councillor Strunk talked about the citywide litter project, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about that in that there was a transfer of 210,000 to our city cleansing. And that's as a result of there being more need in that particular area. So it's a rephasing, but it's also something that that is just going across the area there. Finally, I just want to turn, as I always do, to mosquitoes. And I'm not sure how many times people have to stand up in this chamber and talk about the fact that the funding for mosquitoes is 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 put around the need. So councillor Cummings, yet again, you've raised concerns which are absolutely appalling that you should put this very vital programme into the into the arena of doubt. So let me just let you know what we have been doing. This financial year, council's budgeted $4.9 million into mosquito and pest services, hence the need to move monies around within the budget. This can vary depending on the weather conditions and advice from our expert entomologists. Our aerial sprays typically treat 1,500 to 2,000 hectares, with council undertaking 10 to 15 treatments in an average season, and they can cover 30,000 hectares in a season. Council also carries out more than 110,000 ground-based visits every year to treat mosquito breeding sites. And of course, our entomologists work closely with Queensland Health to ensure ensure early virus detection. Currently, council manages more than 2,500 known freshwater mosquito breeding sites across the city. And in a typical season, our mosquito control unit will treat around 20,000 hectares of coastal salt marsh by helicopter with ground support by quad bike teams, utility and teams on foot. So Chair, through you, I just want to put that on the record yet again about the magnificent work that our mosquito team is doing. I commend the report to the chambers.
Further speakers, councillor Richards.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Look, I rise to speak about item E, the quarterly financial report for March 2019, in particular the questions raised by the leader of the
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Yeah, I think I know what it's going to be. Councillor Johnston, go ahead.
She would be the same.
Okay. Sorry, councillor Richards, go ahead.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Well, I have you speaking, I have you as the third speaker on this item.
Yeah.
I have it that you've already spoken tonight.
She has. Yeah.
Yeah, so I've got this list in front of me, and you spoke after councillor Cumming.
I was trying.
Are there further, are there further speakers? No, thank you, Peter. Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on items D, E and potentially F. For the benefit of the new councillors in the chamber, I did want to point out that the annual operating plan and quarterly report comes to this chamber every quarter for review and debate. The report we're currently reviewing is for March 2019, and certainly new councillors could be forgiven for thinking the sky was falling in based on the comments that we're getting from the other side of the chamber. These reports reflect payments to March, end of March 2019. And as is the case with most of our projects, the early part of the financial year is spent doing design and consultation work with the heavy expenditure undertaken in the second half of the year. So the point that councillor Johnston made about 52% of the the budget being expended at the end of March, the reality is that come the end of June, that figure will be very, very different. So in terms of the annual operating plan, obviously, that's impacted periodically when we bring the budget reviews to the chamber, and that's what we've done today. We've brought the third budget view to the chamber to reflect on the projects and where they currently stand and where we believe the budget will finish the year. So in the context of this particular budget review, we have approximately $47.3 million in budget savings as a result of this budget review. The year to date has given rise to $70 million in savings, and that's certainly a reflection of our ability to make sure that projects are managed in a way that can give rise to savings where possible. So in instances where we do have savings on projects, we're in a position where we can reallocate that funding to other projects to ensure that we minimise debt in the city and also continue to manage the budget in a responsible fashion. So of the $70 million in savings that we've achieved through the budget review process this year, $32 million has been used to fund other projects. So that's particularly pleasing. It's also worth bearing in mind, obviously, the annual operating plan and quarterly report and the budget review are interrelated. So just referencing back to the the annual operating plan, we've received $40 million in earlier-than-anticipated revenue from QUU. Obviously, as an organisation, we receive dividends from a range of organisations, and they can obviously be impacted by the underlying performance and the dividend payment policy of the of the underlying organisation. So councillor Cumming provided an extremely long list of of questions, and we'll be here till next week if if I seek to answer all of them, but I'll certainly make a start on on some of them. So I think the first one that he he raised was related to the increase in fees and charges. And I think he quoted the figure of 6%. Now, over the period of time in question, 6% is is not a significant increase in the context of just the costs of doing business, you know, councils in a marketplace trying to provide high, high-quality services, and invariably, there is a cost associated with that. In the context of the increase in fees and charges, waste management fees in particular will play a key feature there. There's been a lot of debate in this chamber in recent months about the the impact of waste management costs, levies that are need to be absorbed into our business now. So that's the underlying driver for that increase in fees and charges. He raised another issue about the increase in other revenue, and fair comment, there's a fairly significant increase from about $339 million to $581 million. The key driver in this increase is due to an additional payment for Legacy Way, and that's associated with traffic volumes after five years of $127 million, so that's obviously a positive receipt. There'll also be additional dividend payments and revenue from non, sort of, non-core-type act revenue from non-core-type activities, and also we have an accounting standard. There's been a lot of talk in this chamber over probably the last six months or so about changes to accounting standards, and in particular the service concession arrangements, and this also has an impact on revenue. So that's the underlying driver on that increase. Finance costs was another comment. The change there is primarily driven by the accounting standards that I just referred to. Clearly, as those standards are applied, there will be impacts on our P and L and balance sheet, and it is a complex space, but certainly something that our finance team is right across, and we'll see those sorts of changes featured in the forthcoming budget. There was another question there about depreciation and amortisation, and the key driver on that one, I think that was on page two.
Councillors, just a bit of chitter-chatter in the chamber because the councillors will be heard in silence, please.
The increase in depreciation and amortisation is driven primarily by increased appreciation on the road network, bus routes, bus route hardware, park infrastructure. You know, clearly the council has a very, very significant asset base, and that will need to be depreciated over time, and that's the key driver to that increase in depreciation and amortisation. Moving on to page four, you had some questions about cash and cash equivalents changing. Now, obviously in the context of an organisation like council, we have a range of options available to help fund our operations and capital expenditure, and so from time to time, our cash balances will fluctuate, our borrowing requirements will fluctuate, and this is really just a function of the manner in which the council operates its business and funds its underlying capital programmes. Once again, looking down further on that same issue, on page four, he had some issues around other financial liabilities. They have moved around a little bit and will continue to. Once again, as I mentioned, we have a borrowing programme that we use to fund various capital programmes, and those balances will change over time, and that's what we're seeing in that particular change there. On page five, he mentioned other income. This is driven, as I mentioned, by some of those other revenue lines that, or other revenue items that are likely to impact us in coming years. Those particular increases in the context of our business are not particularly large and will be related to particular income items. Finance costs on page five also, as I mentioned, some of that is being driven by the changes in the accounting standards. We are certainly one of the leading councils in the context of instituting and abiding by the new accounting standards, and they do have a significant impact on our balance sheet and P and L purely because of the size of our organisation. Obviously, the impact on smaller councils would be much less significant. Moving on to, you know, dividends received. Obviously, we receive dividends from a range of organisations, QUU, CBIC, the list goes on. So the dividend flow will be very much a function of when the boards of those organisations declare a dividend and when they decide to pay it. And so that will obviously change the outlook on the receipt of dividends and when we receive them. Also on page five, there was some commentary there around the cash position. As I've mentioned, our cash position will ebb and flow depending on the projects that we're running and the projects that we're completing. We have options to fund particularly large capital projects through either via debt or potentially via our cash reserves. And that doesn't make sense for us to sit on large cash reserves when we have sufficient capacity to pay our normal operating expenses.
Councillor Allen, your time's expired. Further speakers? Councillor Maddick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just rise to speak in regards to item D in the third budget review, and specifically to address a few issues that were raised, specifically in regards to the cemetery's redevelopment and the Ludwig Administration Building. The variances are attributable to timing and the overall construction of the building. There was a point raised previously by councillor Cook in committee this morning around lending and library references, and the $516,000. As councillors would know in this chamber previously, Brisbane City Council has applied for the First Five Forever Programme. The state government decided to amend that programme to reduce the amount of funding available to councils and to steer the funding more towards its own priorities through the state library. And so the monies that sit within that of 560 are not all from that programme. There was only $356,000 that council received for the First Five Forever Programme, which is a significant reduction on previous years. The balance of the monies were simply generated from printing services that council offers within libraries, but there is a significant shortfall there from the state, and there is a clear indication they won't be changing their position on that programme. In regards to the Brackenridge Library, the question was raised about the carryover. The carryover is, all of that carryover is in regards to the library itself, and it's simply a timing issue between the significant improvements that we're undertaking. There's 1,000 square metres, which is a doubling of the current library size, and as all councillors know, I've previously updated the chamber that the construction has started on that, and simply this carryover is just a reflection of the overall timing of the works. And in regards to the variance in men's sheds of $266,000, that was really a timing issue. All of those funds, all those grants will be expended in accordance with the June 2019 alignment. In the area of homelessness and affordable housing, a question was raised around $358,000, and these are part of the works the council actually contributes towards, its involvement within homelessness. $344,000 of that is our PCLOs, PCLOs and the works that we do in conjunction with other stakeholders, going around the city and the inner city to meet the needs of the homeless. The other $140,000 is a funding agreement that we have directly with Brisbane Housing Company to assist them in the vital work that they do around affordable housing. And lastly, the question was raised around the Seven Hills Community Centre, the $2.343 million as revenue, that was simply the transference of the asset which is noted in the revenue column. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Further speakers? Lord Meehan, you write a reply. All right. We're going to take, there's a few of these serial items. So all those in favour of item A, resolution A, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
And the contrary, no. The ayes have it. On item B, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
And the contrary, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
A division is called by councillor Cumming and councillor Strunk. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Please ring the bells. Now councillor Johnston asked them to be separated.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, the ayes have it. The voting being 18 in favour, 6 against and 1 abstention.
The ayes have it. Please return to your chairs. All those in favour of item C of this resolution say aye.
Aye.
And the contrary, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cumming, councillor Cassidy. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Please ring the bells. While there's divisions occurring, I might like to acknowledge councillor Nap in the gallery. Welcome to the, welcome to the council.
Mr. Chair, the ayes have it. The voting being 19 in favour, 5 against and 1 abstention.
The ayes have it. Please return to your chairs. In regards to the E and C resolution items D, E and F, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
And the contrary, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called councillor Cumming, councillor Cassidy. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Please ring the bells.
Mr. Chair, the ayes have it. The voting being 18 in favour and 7 against.
The ayes have it. Please return to your chairs. Can I please draw the council's attention to the Public and Active Transport and Economic Development Committee meeting? Deputy Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the report of the Public and Active Transport and Economic Development Committee meeting, upheld on Tuesday, the 21st of May, 2019, be adopted.
Second, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Wyndham, that the report of the Public and Active Transport and Economic Development Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 21st of May, 2019, be adopted. Is there any debate, the deputy mayor?
Thank you. Mr. Chair, last week's presentation was on the ferry terminal upgrade programme, much like our bus stop accessibility improvement programme. Our ferry terminals are required to be DDA compliant by December 2022. In more recent times, as part of this programme, we've seen the opening of the terminal at New Farm Park, and we have now begun the upgrade of the Guyat Park Ferry Terminal as well. The terminal shut down yesterday, and the slow demolition of the current terminal is underway. We know there's about 3,300 people who use this terminal each week, and a lot of them are University of Queensland students as well as local residents. The new terminal is going to be a fantastically new furnished waiting area, improved lighting and safety features, including CCTV. Excuse me. And will, where the permitting be completed by early 2020 as well. We also looked through the other programme upgrades coming up between Dockside, Eagle Street Pier, Mowbray Park, Norman Park, South Bank 1 and 2, Thornton, and of course, the new terminal at Howard Smith Wharves planned for 2020. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Further debate, councillor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, this is why I did not vote for councillor Adams to be the deputy mayor or have any confidence in her ability to deliver when it comes to this portfolio. Now, the third budget review before us today gives a very clear snapshot of the ferry terminal upgrade project. And what that says, and I'll be very specific here, is that there is a carryover of capital from 19, well, from 1819 to 1920 and to 2021 for the Guyat Park and Howard Smith Wharves ferry terminals. $9 million in carryovers over a two-year timeframe. So either what councillor Adams has just told us is true or the third budget review, page 10, is true, but they both can't be true. You can't be powering ahead and then rolling over the money to deliver on the projects that you say you're going to deliver on. Now, the bulk of the funds being carried over from this year, which is $9 million, is actually being carried over into 2021. So that's two years away, and that's $8.3 million. For these two projects, Guyat Park and Howard Smith Wharves ferry terminals, only $680,000 is being rolled over into next year. So council is saying that a project it was supposed to be delivering this year for two new ferry terminals or upgraded terminals is actually now two years delayed. So the truth of all of this is when you look at what is in these financial documents, you can see where this administration is saying one thing, but financially it is unable to deliver on what it is promising. And no doubt, in just three weeks' time, we're going to see the new Lord Mayor re-announcing these projects as part of his budget when all he's doing is rolling over funding that has not been able to be delivered in the current financial year and blowing it out for another two years before these important public transport upgrades are actually delivered. That is not good management.
Further speakers? Councillor Mackay.
Chair, I rise to speak on the Guyat Park ferry upgrade. And first, some history. In 1884, the steamship Roma sailed from England to Australia, 214 immigrants on board, including St Lucia's original Guyat family, after whom the park in question is named. It was a tough start for this family because within 11 weeks, two of their kids had died. He started as a gardener and then built a store on St Lucia Road, and Chair, you would know that is now known as Sir Fred Chanel Drive.
Point of order. Yes, councillor Cumming?
Mr. Chair, look, this is interesting history, but this is not the issue that we're discussing in the council chamber today, and the councillor ought to get his comments, make his comments relevant to what's being discussed.
I mean, councillor-
Thirty minutes.
Okay, okay, everybody.
Chair, I promise I won't ask for an extension.
Mackay has only just begun.
Or three.
But please be mindful. No, no, hey, 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 no interjecting, please. Councillor Mackay, you've only just begun, but please be mindful of relevance.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, point of order to you, councillor Owen.
Would councillor Mackay take a question?
Councillor Mackay, would you take a question?
Certainly.
Councillor Mackay, would you care to inform how the Guyat family played a big role in this city and in relation to this ferry terminal?
Thank you, councillor. Within a decade, the general store and post office that the Guyat family built from scratch was devastated in the flood of 1893. It quite literally floated away and had to be tied to sturdy trees. All of us in this chamber know that St Lucia floods. We all know that in 2011, rising water wrought havoc on different parts of the suburb. My house still has a mudline in the lower level, and we've decided to keep it there as a reminder of the power of the river. But because St Lucia floods so much and so often, it's with great pleasure that I'm able to speak on the redevelopment of the Guyat Park Ferry Terminal. Of course, the ferry terminal will include flood resilience in its design. The new terminal will include a dual berth pontoon, so city cats are able to dock faster and more- and more efficiently, getting commuters home faster. There will also be extra bike storage to encourage St Lucia locals to ride the ferry and not to drive, helping congestion on our local roads. Four large marine piles, Mr Chair, will secure the terminal to provide future-proof flood protection.
Councillors, we heard in silence.
So it cannot float away. Excitingly, I am reliably informed that the new ferry terminal will have a picnic place, so families can enjoy time by the riverside. Of course, we would all be pleased to know that the new ferry terminal meets our obligations to bring it in line with Disability Discrimination Act 1992 and Disability Standards for Accessible Public Transport 2002, which I know is of special importance for some local residents. Speaking of which, I should indicate that construction of a world-class ferry terminal does come with some extra considerations. I am fully aware that the impact the short closure of the ferry stop has had on local residents. I have personally called and spoken with all of the residents who have contacted the Walter Taylor Ward Office about transportation considerations. Local resident Thomas made representations for his wife, who is in a wheelchair. While no other wheelchair provision is available in the area, a solution was found to assist her. I commend the council officers involved in this project. First, to the officers who have worked so hard with their consultation processes to inform local residents and commuters of the plans. Also, those officers who managed to find a solution to the people who require transportation assistance while the Guyat Park Ferry Terminal is temporarily closed, Chair. Residents who apply and are eligible are assisted with a cab charge to allow them to travel to the next closest ferry terminal. Further, I acknowledge the patience and consideration of the residents in the nearby vicinity. Yes, there will be some noise while the terminal is constructed. Establishing the four piles will be slightly noisy, but I'm reliably informed by council officers that this will be reduced to half an hour a day for 16 days. I thank the residents for their patience and look forward to them having a world-class transport hub in one of Brisbane's most loved parks. The good news, of course, is that most construction will take place primarily from the river, and a barge will be in place near the existing terminal for the duration of the works. Just as Martha and David Guyat made their living providing for the booming Ironside estates in the early 1900s, so too will the new improved Guyat Park City Cat Terminal provide for the fantastic residents and commuters of the St Lucia area. I wholeheartedly endorse Guyat Park Ferry Terminal upgrade and invite you to the opening later this year. Thank you.
Further speakers? They're being done, councillor Adams. I'll now put the resolution. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Can I please draw the council's attention to the Infrastructure Committee? Councillor Cooper.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting, held on Tuesday, the 21st of May, 2019, be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Cooper, seconded by councillor Huang, that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting, dated the 21st of May, 2019, be adopted. Is there any debate? Councillor Cooper.
Very briefly, Mr Chair, we had a presentation on Move Safe Brisbane. There's a particular outcome to look at safety at key locations like hospitals, universities and aged care facilities. So it is a project that council is currently underway, doing work on these sorts of plans. There's approximately 50 hospitals or facilities of the, with similar sort of characteristics that will be considered as part of this programme. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnson?
Yes, I rise briefly to speak on the Infrastructure Committee report. I'd just like to place on the record how astonished I was at councillor Cooper's presentation last week, given the content, which is specifically around improving pedestrian outcomes around major educational hospital and aged care facilities. As most councillors in this place know, we've had multiple petitions come through the chamber to put traffic lights outside the village at Yoronga, which is both a high-care aged care nursing home and independent living units for retirees, and there's about 400 residences now in this very small pocket of land. So it was somewhat surprising to me that councillor Cooper's department sent me back the same old response to the seventh petition that the residents have lodged, calling for the safe crossing point with, with lights. And essentially, that is, we'll do another pedestrian count. Well, and then I come into committee and I sit down and I listen to councillor Cooper and the senior council officers telling us, yes, yes, we've got this great focus on aged care, and we're going to make sure that there's move safe done for those residents, and we're going to look at improving, improving safe movement around. And councillor Nap, sitting up there, and I know this will be news to her, the only person in this place who is trying to do something to support the village at Yoronga, I mean, family members of councillor Nap, we know all about this, is me. The LMP have voted against it and stopped it every single time. You cannot continue to put hundreds of frail and elderly residents into a location without the infrastructure support that they need. Now, these are hollow words from councillor Cooper about move safe, and unless this council changes its approach to how it delivers infrastructure for the frail and elderly people of our community, it just makes a mockery of what she's saying. Now, I have referred it back to the Lord Mayor. Guess what? I copied in councillor Cooper. Councillor Cooper, who barely ever responds to me, I got a one-line response from her staff, even though this is her portfolio area, saying she's going to leave it to the Lord Mayor to give me an answer. I mean, her portfolio, her initiative last week, and when I write to her, as she's just stood up and said, you know, tell us where your problems are and we'll look into it, she gets a staff member to write back and say, yep, no, I'm not going to look at it. The Lord Mayor can deal with it. That's how this woman operates. She says one thing.
Well, councillor Johnson, please, please use appropriate titles.
That's how this female councillor operates. She says one thing, and she does something else. So let me be clear, Lord Mayor, because she's put it on your plate. We have waited for years and years and years for a safety upgrade at this location. We need traffic lights. There is a huge speeding problem. There is a huge vehicle problem. It's a massive sporting precinct. This council took over $3 million in infrastructure charges from the developer, and it's not spent at locally improving facilities around the area. Instead, they're pork-barreling out in LMP wards. The elderly people of Yoronga should not be put at risk because this council will not act. And if you put out another petition, another, another petition response, which is what you've done and given to me, saying we'll do another pedestrian count after you did one last year, I mean, they're just pathetic do-nothing responses. It is just not acceptable any longer, particularly when you bring presentations and initiatives into this place that say you will focus on delivering around aged care facilities. Here is the test. Here is what you need to do. You need to deliver a safe crossing point here. I note that when the village at Cooperoo was being built, the traffic lights went in straight away. Straight away, even before the building was done, they got traffic lights put in. But meanwhile, the frail and elderly residents of the Yoronga Retirement Village are being ignored by this LMP administration, and it is wrong, and they are putting lives at risk. I mean, they're just going to keep writing. You cannot keep ignoring them, and you cannot bring policy initiatives like this forward when they have no reality, no basis in reality compared to what you are actually doing out in my ward, and I don't know perhaps other wards. But to say you are focusing on aged care when clearly you are not is a big fat lie, and you can be sure I'll tell every one of those 400 residents what you've done.
Councillor Johnson, please stop, please stop. The sort of language you've used, you'd be very upset if someone said it to you and about you. Can you please be mindful of that when you're making those comments about other people? All right, further speakers? Councillor Shree.
Thanks, Mr Chair. And I rise to speak about the, the report, and particularly around hospital zones. I've met with council officers around the Mater Hospital and Children's Hospital in my ward, and I, I do have some concerns that the administration is moving a bit slowly on some fairly obvious and straightforward, much-needed reforms. I've been advocating for some time now for a 40 kilometre an hour hospital zone speed limit around that hospital precinct, and the MUTCD allows council to do that or to trial that fairly easily. It's not a complicated and laborious process. And I've, I've felt a little bit frustrated at how slow the administration seems to be moving. This is obviously an important safety concern. There are patients, family members visiting the hospital precinct, a lot of stressed-out and busy staff and, and hospital workers all moving around that area, and we still have vehicles roaring through that precinct at 60 kilometres an hour. So it's, it's pretty common sense that the speed limit should be lowered. The, the question is just when can that happen and why is it taking so long? There's a number of other smaller changes that need to happen around Raymond Terrace and, and the Stanley Street precinct, and I won't take up all the councillors in this chamber's time with listing them one by one, but in general, the, what we need to do is deprioritise car access and transport through that area so that we can improve access for ambulances and other emergency vehicles, and also improve safety and access for pedestrians and cyclists. So there's a need for more traffic calming, there are need, there's a need to redesign the intersections and improve the signal phasing, because at the moment pedestrians are having to wait a very long time to cross some of those roads around the hospital, and as a result, they're jaywalking, and then there are near misses with vehicles. So that whole precinct needs to be redesigned to have a greater emphasis on, on pedestrians and bikes. And happily, the opportunity for council is that none of the changes that are necessary require a great deal of investment. They, they primarily relate to speed, lowering the speed limits, changing the times of signal phasing, and a few minor traffic calming upgrades. So they're not expensive changes, but they're changes that both the hospitals support and which I, as the local councillor, support. The problem seems to be that this administration is so slow when it comes to improving pedestrian safety, and takes such a long time and requires multiple detailed studies to tell the community stuff that we already know. And so this isn't a criticism of any one public servant or any particular councillor, but there's a general frustration that residents have been advocating, and hospital staff have been advocating for these improvements for a long, long time, and now we're told that the hospitals will have to produce their own move safe plan, and that that's gonna, there's going to be more back and forth with that, and it, it just seems like an unnecessarily delay, and, and essentially more bureaucracy when, when the changes that are requested are quite straightforward and have broad support already. During peak periods, cars don't move any faster than 40 kilometres an hour through Stanley Street anyway, so I can't see that it's going to have a massive impact on traffic flow either way, but it will certainly have a big improvement to pedestrian safety, and I really urge the, the relevant chair and the mayor to take this issue more seriously, because I think it's, it's been bubbling away for a while, and the moment there's a serious crash outside that hospital, or I should say another serious crash, we've already had others in the past, but the moment there's another serious crash outside that hospital and someone is injured in a situation that didn't need to happen, I think a lot of people will be feeling really, really frustrated that we've been dragging our feet on this one.
Further speakers? They're being done, councillor Cooper.
Just briefly, in response to a couple of the comments that have been made, particularly councillor Shree suggesting that, that council shouldn't be going through a move safe process, I would respectfully disagree with you. I think it's an important process that council is undertaking, just like we are working with schools to do traffic management plans, where we are actually working collaboratively with them, engaging with residents, the school community, and indeed council officers participating in that process. It's delivered some excellent results, and we've had very, very strong support from schools, with over 150 traffic management plans undertaken. We believe that that same sort of process is entirely appropriate for us to undertake with the schools, with the hospitals, and indeed, we've had actually very strong support with those hospitals that we've already commenced our discussions with. Prince Charles Hospital could not be more positive about this particular process, in fact, have been extremely excited about the opportunity to work with council in this way. So I note that councillor Shree seems to, on a regular basis, think that there's too much bureaucracy in this place, but fundamentally, council officers have to make decisions that they believe are in the best interest and in compliance with their code of conduct. If it is an engineering decision, they have to make a decision that is a safe one, and they have to be confident that it is fully compliant with all legislation, and I think that they act entirely appropriately in considering all of these matters before they make any hasty decisions. And I note that councillor Shree would disagree with this, but I believe that the officers are very respectful and very keen to progress these issues with those local hospitals. Thank you very much, Mr Chair.
All those in favour of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
And the contrary, no. The ayes have it. I draw the council's attention to the City Planning Committee report.
Thanks, Mr Chairman. I move the report of the City Planning Committee meeting, held on Tuesday, the 21st of May, 2019, be adopted.
Seconded, Mr Chairman.
It's been moved by councillor Burke, seconded by councillor Turmy, that the report of the City Planning Committee meeting, dated 21st of May, 2019, be adopted. Councillor Burke, is there any debate?
Thanks very much, Mr Chair, and I just, before I get to the report, there's two items on the report we have before us today. There's a development application and a petition before us today, but it's again my melancholy duty to inform the council chamber that the state government has still not provided correspondence to us about the TLPI to ban townhouses and low-density residential zonings in this city, nor have they provided their response around major Amendment H, well and truly now outside the ministerial guidelines, that they're self-imposed ministerial guidelines, Mr Chairman, and it is a shame that they continue to put in jeopardy residential blocks across this city and not work with us collaboratively to protect them from townhouse development. And so I, I just hope that by next Tuesday, by next Tuesday, I can inform the council chamber that the state has provided that correspondence to us. Turning to the two items before us, I'll deal with the petition first. The petition is about a childcare centre in Wyndham, Wyndham West. It is an application that council refused, has gone to the courts, it is currently before the court process, and the response back to the applicant, the response back to the petition is, is that we have to let that court process proceed, and council is working through the court process to defend our decision there, Mr Chair. The application, though, that we had as part of the presentation at last week's committee meeting was for the site at 15 Gordon Street and 43 Evelyn Street at Newstead. This site is for an aged care and retirement living facility down there in Newstead. It provides also drink and food outlet, as well as some shop facilities, as well as the headquarters for Auscare. So this is a two-tower proposal that has been put forward by the applicant. It consists of 120 beds for aged care, 142 units for retirement living, as I said, the state headquarters for Auscare. There is two stages to the development, Mr Chair, so there is one stage, which is for a 16-storey tower, and then also another stage, which has a podium and a 23-storey tower. The Newstead Tenerife area recently had its neighbourhood plan, and this particular development is compliant with the heights that were set out as part of that neighbourhood plan, Mr Chairman. There is 298 car parks that form part of the development, and there is also two substantial pieces of community infrastructure which are being delivered as part of this development. So there is 1,000 square metre privately owned, publicly accessible, so 24/7 publicly accessible open space, as well as a major trunk stormwater infrastructure upgrade being delivered as part of this development. This proposal was referred to the state government, it is over 200 units, so it is referred to the state government, and they provided their consent for the development to proceed, and provided some conditions as well around pick-up and set up, pick-up and drop-off areas. And I know that councillor Howard is supportive of this particular development as well down there in Tenerife, sorry, down there in Newstead. It adds to the existing developments that are down in that part of the world, Mr Chair. There's an eclectic mix of uses down there, and that helps make that part of the city a vibrant part of the city and support some of the existing developments. So we see great co-location in terms of this particular proposal for aged care and retirement living, close to services, close to high-frequency public transport, close to shops, close to other services that support this type of use, and I commend both of the items on the agenda to all the councillors.
Further debate? Councillor Cumming?
Yes, thanks, Mr Chair. Just briefly, in relation to item B, this, I'm happy to support the response to petition. The residents in that area ran a great campaign, lots of objections, lots of call flutes, good publicity, and council obviously refused the application. The developer has appealed, the residents want council to take their case all the way to, to a hearing in the court and not give in and. The residents want council to take their case all the way to, to a hearing in the court and not give in and settle the matter. And we hope that will occur.
Further speakers? Councillor Richards.
Mr Chair, I move that council now adjourn for dinner for a period of one hour, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Richard, seconded by councillor Marks. That this councillor adjourns for a, for dinner for a period of one hour, commencing when all councillors have left the chamber and the doors have been locked. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
And the contrary, no. The ayes have it.
Aye.
On the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, can I draw your attention to the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee report? councillor Richards.
Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 21st of 1st of May 2019 be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Richards, seconded by councillor Cunningham, that the reports of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday the 21st of May 2019 be adopted. Is there any debate councillor Richards?
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Councillor Strunk.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Listen, can I ask that petition, or sorry, item C be undertaken as a ready item for voting purposes, please?
That item C be taken as a ready item for voting. Councillor Richards.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Just before I head into the committee talk of last week, I just wanted to raise a particular item that's come to the attention of a number of ward officers and council officers these past few days, is that we received a lot of communications from residents concerned that we're actually closing some Mount Cootha mountain biking trails. So what I want to put on record tonight is that, you know, Mount Cootha is the only designated location for off-road mountain bike riding. And these tracks and trails are used more than 700,000 times each year. So, you know, due to the high level of use and at peak times, the mountain bike facilities at Mount Cootha are at capacity. They're ever increasing in popularity for the off-road cycling tracks. It's actually led to a higher demand on our current tracks, which has also led to some unplanned and unauthorised trail construction. So the issue we're actually putting on record tonight to let the public know that we are not closing what is the designated mountain biking precinct trails on Mount Cootha. We're actually addressing the illegal trail network that has been created in a section of Mount Cootha that's not within this precinct, that's designated for mountain bike trails, that, you know, one particular trail itself is 4.7 kilometres long. It's poorly built, it's unsustainable, it's actually got some unsafe tracks, it's got some bridge works that are two planks of wood, and in one section there's a three metre drop. Now, these trails aren't just used for bikers, you know, it is used for our fauna, but it's also young families. You know, families do walk along these trails that are designated biking trails. But in particular, you know, it is families that use the trails as well. So if a young child came across this particular trail and went down a section of it, they wouldn't realise they'd be approaching a three metre drop. By the time they got there, there'd be a serious injury at the end of it. So I just want to put on record that Asset Services, the Natural Environment Team do have a strategy to address these illegal trails. They will be briefing the local councillors in the precinct area, which would be councillor Toomey at the Gap Ward, councillor Maddick in the Paddington Ward, also neighbouring councillor councillor Mackay, just to give him some advice, because I do know there's a lot from Walter Taylor that use the mountain as well for mountain biking. We are installing signage on these trails and progressively they will be actually defunct and worked through slowly to close them down and re-vegetate and monitor the sites. So I just wanted to bring the chamber to that point. Now, talking about last week, at the committee on the 21st of May, we had a presentation from council officers on the Tui Forest upgrade. It's located 10 kilometres south of Brisbane at 600 Tui Road in Nathan, Tui Forest Park, which spans approximately 260 hectares. The Tui Forest Park Facilities Upgrade Project aims to improve accessibility and connectivity through Tui Forest Park, as well as provide enhanced amenity and safety for park visitors. The upgrade has been delivered in two stages. Stage one started in April 2018 and is now complete. And stage two of the project will include installing a new accessible compost toilet facility, upgrading the two existing lookout areas along the Sandstone Circuit walking trail, one to include a dedicated timber viewing platform and the other to include a timber deck and picnic setting. Also installing CCTV cameras at the picnic facility to enhance security and safety. I want to thank councillor Griffiths, who actually put on record at the committee meeting his thanks for the hard work that the officers have put into this project and as has been well received by the community and in great addition to the natural area. So thank you councillor Griffiths for acknowledging the officers on the work that they have done out there. We also had passed through the committee the Bushland Acquisition Levy Report for the period ended March 2019. Properties that council has acquired as at the end of March in the 2018-19 financial year include 75 Van Deeren Road Polara, which is 1.6 hectares, 106 Leacraft Road Burbank, that's 0.9, 9.0 hectares, 2724 Bay Desert Road Calenvale, one hectare, 1781 Mount Cravat Capalaba Road Burbank, 4.8 hectares, and 458 to 526 Prize Pocket Road Moghl for 20.2 hectares. There were also two petitions that went through committee. The first a petition requesting that council retain Hock Davis Park Inala instead of transforming the open stormwater drainage into a community car park. The proposed response was not supported by the local councillor and I imagine that he'll talk on this issue. But what I will say is that council investigated whether there were any complaints regarding on-street parking and there was none. The park is held in trust and we would have issues granting a lease, which would be inconsistent with the purpose of the trust. As per section 52.2 of the Land Act 1994, council's actions must be consistent with, a) the purpose for which the reserve was dedicated.
Councillors, now we've just come back from dinner and that everyone's a bit excited from eating, but can we just allow the councillor to be heard in silence, please? Councillor Richards.
Thank you, Mr Chair. All the land was granted in trust. So Hock Davis Park is a reserve granted in trust to council for park purposes. The second petition was a petition requesting council rename the park at 5 Wellington Road, Wellington Road East Brisbane as Watt Park, which I note councillor Shree is actually not in the chamber tonight to hear this. Councillor Shree is actually unhappy with the park named after a local small business. His main concern is that the head petitioner is a family member of the Watt family. The Watt Brothers was founded in 1923 when John Watt, a master blacksmith and carriage builder, relocated from Upper Coomberie in the Gold Coast hinterland to Wollongaba in east Brisbane. The first bus was built in February 1928 for the Taringa Bus Service in Brisbane and from his initial vehicle, the Watt Brothers went on to manufacture over 500 buses and coaches before sale to custom coaches. The Watt family have been a small business in Brisbane for nearly 100 years, employing hundreds of people in the area. However, the petition response that is to be sent out only suggests that we council consider naming the park after the Watt family. Councillor Shree is welcome to do further community consultation to find an alternative name. So I'd also like to mention that councillor Griffiths abstained from voting for this petition, but all other committee members voted in favour. So the petition responses, as set out, were passed by the committee. There were two Ward Footpath and Park Trust funds that also passed through as well. So I'm happy to take any questions on that, Mr Chair. But just before I move on, I just wanted to close out some questions that were raised by the opposition leader councillor Cumming in relation to the E and C report for item E, Quarterly Financial Report for March 2019. So, there's a few here, so bear with me, please. So first item was 3.1.3.1 Environmental and Livability Initiatives for the Community, in particular the Norman Creek 2012 to 2031. The reason for these carryovers was because it needed to align to the proposed construction timeline for Hanlon Park. Construction will not commence until 2019, 2019 to 20 and will be delivered over two financial years. The next item was the Northern Suburbs Environmental Centre, again, to align with the revised project delivery timeframe. The contract was awarded in March 2019 and the contractor's delivery schedule has informed this figure and practical completion is expected late 2019. The third item raised was renewing Great Brisbane Gardens. The carryover of 326,000 capital budget is to align with the revised project delivery timeframe for the Kangaroo Point River Terrace project. Carryover requested due to a longer than anticipated consultation process to agree on the scope of works. Construction's to commence end of May, early June 2019, with an estimated project completion around December 2019. The fourth item was 100% carbon neutral, which I note councillor Cumming made a comment of would have thought a yearly target would have been met with this particular item. So to provide some clarity around why the carryover has occurred, that's because the new Bracken Ridge Library solar is to align with the construction schedule for the new library. This is actually called good project management governance, to actually deliver items for a project with the project, provide value for money. So that's why that one's carried over. The next item was 3.3.2.1 Conservation Reserves Management. There was a statement implied why Brisbane Infrastructure Depot Consolidation Project Team seemed to be the ones put the blame for delays. That is not the case. The fact is it's an increase in labour and associated costs with the team and the overall increase is as shown in that area. It also covers numerous services through programmes two and programme three. So that covered item 3.3.2.1 and 3.3.3.1. The next item was 3.3.4.1 Park Development and Enhancement, which was Enzack Square Restoration.
Your time has expired. Are there further speakers?
Move for extension.
I move for an extension. I have a motion for an extension from councillor Marks, seconded by councillor Adams. All those in favour say aye?
Aye.
On the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Richards, please continue.
Thank you, Mr Chair. So as I was talking about 3.3.4.1 Park Development Enhancement for Enzack Square Restoration. As you know, doubt or aware, the square was completely open for use on Enzack Day during commemoration services. And the feedback we did receive during the dawn service and the advantage points around the parade was overwhelmingly positive. The quality of the square on Enzack Day speaks to the success of the restoration enhancement works. And I know that residents and visitors were particularly impressed by the significant enhancement to the crypt and memorial galleries. The other thing to note is that this is not an everyday kind of project is undertaken and the space is so steeped in history and protected by heritage requirements. Quality is the utmost importance to the imperative history and highest standards that this area rightly is expected to receive. So to answer the question why there is actually a carryover, that's because two weeks ago we discussed in this chamber about the delay because of the bronze commemorative screens, which were sourced by a specific craftsman to actually provide this equipment, which is now being installed, due for installation late July. So that's why that was carried over. So the other items that was raised by the opposition leader was actually item 3.3.6.1, the Mount Cootha zip line. Again, this is a carryover money not spent on the project after it was cancelled. But this money, the $380,000, is actually proposed to be spent on the infrastructure across the mountain, such as signage and trails. Okay, the other items that were raised was item 3.4.3.1 Coastal Hazard Adaption. This is a carryover expense and revenue budget to align with revised project schedule and grant funding arrangements. Stakeholder engagement expected to occur late 2019, 2020. The next one's 3.4.3.3 Drainage Construction Resilience. It was 1.5, 1,519,000. So the 1.1 was carryover for land and easement acquisition for Mornington Street Red Hill project. Technical issues have delayed finalisation of the preferred route of rock tunnel boring works. The $400,000 carryover from 2018-19 to 1920 is part of multi-funded Illawong Way Karana Downs project as a result of delays in achieving agreement with the local indigenous group on cultural heritage management plan and a permit to work in the buffer zone of a protected plant. That's been identified, so currently working with City Legal to resolve a permit on these issues. The next item's 3.4.3.4 Plan for Future Infrastructure, the stormwater infrastructure. So it's $3.6 million carryover of capital from 2018-19 to 1920 due to delays in a number of projects, being Wickham Street Fortitue Valley due to conflict with specialised Telstra Communications pit works whilst Telstra investigate relocation of services. Chermside Street Tenerife due to realignment of delivery expectations with contractor related works. Sydney Street New Farm due to a realignment of delivery expectations with contractor related works. Commercial Road Tenerife, deliveries being slower than originally expected due to poor soil conditions. The next item's 3.4.4.4 Cycling Desilting Waterways and Drains. The carryover the expense for 1819 to 1920 was for the Castle Main Street and Black Street desilting works carried out by the contractor. Works need to align with the commencement of the Mud Cat in August 2019. Now finally, the other items that were raised was in relation to page 29, Sustainable and Resilient Community. The 65,000, the low carbon and clean environment was also 405,000. These, the majority of money is always spent in the second half of the year because the first half is planning and design. Sustainable and resilient community, this is a Hanlon Park, renewing Great Brisbane Gardens and Boondle Environmental Centre. These are in design phase and will move into construction. The low carbon and clean environment is a delay in purchasing the renewable energy certificates to being later in the financial year than previously phased as market prices continue to fall for them. The final item that was raised was on page 31 in relation to 3.4.1.4 Improve Ecological Health and Livability of Waterways. This is about enforcement because of dry weather. Because of dry weather, there's been more of a focus on large, high-profile development sites. This fluctuation's due to seasons. People still can be pinned, though, for not having erosion controls in place. Because there's been dry weather, there's also been less activity, so a net zero impact due to less expenses and less revenue. Yet we're still committed to erosion, sediment control and enforcement. So, Mr Chair, you know, my background, as some may know, in here is construction. I can certainly vouch that this council actually knows how to deal with projects. They know when they need to put them, to move them and carry over the funds because we're delivering for this city, we're ensuring we're protecting our lifestyle and our backyard. So thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you. Further speakers, councillor Strunk.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Listen, I rise to, just to make comment briefly on the petition C, or item C, the petition. Now, this, this petition is identically worded petition that came to this chamber, I think it was on the fourteenth for debate, and I made some comments then in regards to the fact that we weren't going to support the recommendation and my, and my ideas and thoughts haven't changed from that. So, thank you, Mr Chair.
Further speakers?
Ah, yes.
Councillor Griffiths.
Ah, yes, thank you, Mr Chair. Just to speak to a couple, couple of items in the report and particularly to item A, which we had presentation last week on Tuie Forest, which is one of a very beautiful area of the city, only seven kilometres from the city, in the southern suburbs, my ward. Can I say that the work that's been undertaken in this particular picnic node is really beneficial because it has enabled or will enable more people to actually stay and use the park in this area, particularly with the, the addition of the toilet facility. I know a number of schools and family groups want to use the facility but aren't able to do that because they aren't able to obviously use toilet facility. So this, this whole project has been a great addition and, yes, I'm certainly believe the officers have done a very good job and it does add to the, the enjoyment of Tuie Forest and, and the koalas that are there, very healthy koala population. Secondly, I'd just like to talk about item D, which is Watt Park, and it's disappointing that the Greens councillor isn't here. You know, councillor Sri has a lot to say often and it's disappointing that we aren't getting his feedback in relation to this item and as it relates to his own ward. We, look, in terms of the naming process for this park, we support the naming process for this park. There were some concerns and there have been concerns raised and by councillor Sri, but I'm aware of it being raised in other areas of the city where councillors are saying we need to recognise the indigenous history of the city and that is a very apt and important, important objective that we need to be reaching in terms of the naming of our parks. I think when a, when a park name has been so strongly supported, however, by so many local residents, and it is highlighting a local business in the area, then, then to, to not support it because you think there might be another name that could be applied to the park seems a bit of a lame excuse. So it's really up to councillor Sri, in this instance, I think, to go out and look for another name for this, for this park and work with local residents to put forward another name. So it's a bit disappointing that councillor Sri isn't supporting the name of this park because he's saying, well, it could be named something else. You actually need to do the work with the naming of something else rather than it could be or it should be. With that said, bud, I have spoken to councillor Hammond in her role and to her staff. One of the difficulties I've found with, now on two occasions, with having a park named after an indigenous person or indigenous name, has been that the, the, the very convoluted process that we have in council now to, to clarify whether that name's accurate and the history behind that name. And, and what's been coming back to me in the south region is, well, now you've come up with this name, now you need to go back and the, the people who present the petition need to go back and do the full history of why they've got this name and document it and prove it and if necessary, pay the cost of investigating this naming process. Now, I, I've spoken to councillor Hammond and said, I don't think that's reasonable. We have a, a grouping council that can do this piece of work and that should be their role to do this piece of work, but to come back and say that this should be done by the people who are proposing the name seems to be a bit of a, a convenient obstacle to the naming of parks after indigenous, after indigenous names or people. So with that said, we have concerns about the naming process in relation to that and we believe it can be improved in a, improved significantly. And really, the Lord Mayor and this administration have been here fifteen years now, fifteen long years, and we're just seeing some of these initiatives proposed after fifteen long years in this chamber and you sort of really wonder what's going on. Fifteen years to get a DV strategy. Anyway, yes, as I've said, we have concerns about this, we have concerns about the lack of connection. I'm picking up grumbling over there, picking up a bit of abuse. We... There we go. Oh, it's councillor Adams. Who would have thought?
Councillor Griffiths, please stay on topic. There was no abuse. And councillors, please calm down. And councillor Griffiths, please return to your topic, please.
Yes, yes. Who would have thought that fifteen years in this chamber and the LMP still don't have a policy for, a proper policy in place for indigenous naming of parks? Thank you, Mr Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Richards. All right, I will now put items A, B and C. All those in support of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
The contrary, no. The ayes have it. And item C, all those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
And the contrary, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
There's a division called by councillor Strunk and councillor Cumming. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Clerks, please ring the bells. Attendants, please close the bars. Clerks, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it. The voting being eighteen in favour and five against.
The ayes have it. Please return to your chairs. All right, can I draw the council's attention to the Field Services Committee report? Councillor Howard.
Chair, I move that the report of the Field Services Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the twenty-first of May, two thousand and nineteen, be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Howard, seconded by councillor Marks, the report of the Field Services Committee meeting dated the twenty-first of May, two thousand and nineteen, be adopted. Is there any debate, councillor Howard? Anyone else? Councillor Cumming.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chair. Mr Chair, in relation to clause B of the report, I, I support the response to the petition, which is, the petition originally wanted a, a doubling of tree density along the waterfront areas. The proposal is for approximately about twenty trees to be planted. The problem with, with planting trees along the waterfront areas, to be straight, is that people are worried about losing their views. They pay a lot of money for their, for a good view of the bay and they are concerned that with some unlimited planting, inappropriate style of planting, they could have their views badly affected. The proposals from the council staff look reasonable, but I said, we're going to have to do extensive consultation and you have to prove to people that the planning will be reasonable and won't have an adverse effect on, on the housing along the esplanade. So they've agreed to that and we'll see if that could, see what happens with that. The other suggestion was to plant trees along other streets, which I'm happy about, but I've, I've found in the past, if you plant trees outside someone's place and they don't want them, quite often they disappear and so we're wasting ratepayers' money. So the council has said they'll plant a hundred and ninety trees in Winter Manly early in two thousand and nineteen, twenty, which I think is a reasonable approach. Again, the normal policy, people be asked if they want a tree on their footpath and I'm a supporter of trees. I normally most loathe to support removal of trees. I think trees are good for the city, they make the city cooler, they make better air quality, more shade and I think trees are really important. And I'm happy to see more trees planted, but I don't want to see council resources wasted with planting trees which unfortunately disappear. So I accept the recommendation, support the recommendation and I look forward to the process.
Further contributions? Councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr Chairman. I rise to speak on item C. Council trim or remove the tree that has overtaken the footpath at the corner of King Street, Benley Road, Curubie. Just rise in support of the young gentleman who went round and organised this petition. He noticed that there was an issue down there, a tree that had been overgrown for a number of years. Very active resident, local community, very committed to the local area, very involved in the local area and in community groups down that way. So he was able to get strong support from residents down there, who said that they've reported this job numerous times over the three years and there'd been no action. So it's a shame that, to get action on trimming a tree that's blocking a concrete footpath requires a petition to council. Something's not right. So I think, congratulations to that resident, John Prescott. He's done very well. He will be, he will be a very active resident. He's already going from house to house, door knocking. And I think, and I think he's doing, I think, we, we almost need some, like... Yeah, yeah, thank you. There's a, Runcorn Ward only has four suburbs in it, four suburbs. So I know mine has ten. So you sort of think, four suburbs, what is the councillor doing down there in terms of getting round to the local residents? And why is it taking three years to get a tree trimmed? And why are the residents saying, we've put it through once and then we put it through again and we still can't get action? And why is council saying we couldn't find the address? I don't know. There seems to be a lot of excuses. There's been excuses all the way through this and I know that John Prescott will be down there doing more for his community and I look forward to him representing this side of the chamber after the election next time. Thank you.
Councillor Marks. Okay, councillors, councillors, please. Councillor Marks.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on item C and put a little bit of truth into the chambers. Let's hear what actually happened. So, as the owner of the property, which I'm going to put out on the record because it's on here anyway, is number one, King Street, Curubie. He owns a house in King Street of which attached to it is a two separate dwellings, which has got two separate families living on it. And he had spoken to one of his friends in his particular community and said that he'd tried to get this tree removed and council had said no. What should he do? His friend recommended that he contact this particular active resident, active resident, because he was Labour and maybe a different Labour person might be able to get something done as opposed to the councillor. So, anyway, that's okay. So what I did was when I found out about it, I contacted council officers, because, you know, they're actually the ones that actually do the work, the council officers. I don't actually go out and trim trees myself, it's against the law, and found, to find out if there had been any trim, tree trim requests from the resident of one, King Street, Curubie. So I got the information. So there was a request for trimming in November two thousand and fifteen, a councillor request. Leaves were falling into the yard. The tree was trimmed for access and vision. That was completed on the twenty-ninth of February two thousand and sixteen, so February two thousand and sixteen. December two thousand and sixteen, that same year, that particular resident requested a trimming, again, branches, overhanging trees and branches falling into the property. It was inspected, no work was required and I have a photo here of that was taken at that particular time in December. The next request came through on February two thousand and nineteen. So it wasn't that there was nothing done, it was just there was no request between December two thousand and sixteen, when no work was required, to February two thousand and nineteen. Again, a trim drew to leaf litter. Now, this is where the unfortunate bit happened. The resident had put in the address of the tree as one, King Street, Curubie. That's where the officers went. Was when it was drawn to their attention that the actual tree was on Benley Road, which is a different road, different frontage, they went back out and re-inspected and said, yes, the tree did need trimming. So it was put in and it was due to happen in that schedule and as any decent councillor in this place who knows their job, knows councils, officers come out on a quarterly basis to our wards and mine happened to be March and then not until sort of July. It wasn't actually due to be done until the July because by the time the officers got through and put, logged it into the system. So they were going to leave it till July. I asked them if they could please do it done sooner because I went out and had a look at it myself and yes, it did need trimming along that footpath. It was causing some issue with residents, they've been able to access that footpath. So they fast-tracked it and it was done on the fourth of April two thousand and nineteen. Now, after that happened, I went out and I spoke to, because I wanted to speak to the resident who'd put in the original complaint and said, look, if you've got any issues, don't hesitate to contact me. He wasn't home, but one of the people that lives in one of the houses next to his property, that the tree actually overhangs, was mortified at the fact that a petition had gone out asking for a removal. Because this is what the petition says, we, the undersigned, request that Brisbane City Council trim the tree that has overtaken the footpath at the corner of King Street and Benley Road in Kurabey. I'm, I think he means Curubie because Curubie's K-U-R-A-B-Y. Yeah, so it's, it's Curubie. We also request the Brisbane City Council to consider removing the tree due to this being a very common issue. I'm not sure what the common issue was. Yes, trees do drop their leaves. Yeah, and they grow. Yeah, do they do. So I spoke to this lady, as I say, who's more than happy to go out into her yard every week and sweep up the leaves that this tree manages to drop in her yard. And as I said, she was mortified at the thought that this was going to be removed. We, we did sort of do a little bit of a, a scan about where these people were that signed the petition and, I mean, you know, there's like three of them that are close by and the rest are nowhere near the tree. But I wrote, I wrote, I wrote back to all the residents in that whole particular area and not one single person wrote to me and said, yes, please, you must remove that tree. As for the comment that, you know, my ward only has four suburbs, yes, it only has four suburbs, but you know what, it has the same amount of voters as everybody else pretty much. So I don't know what the number of suburbs has got to do with it. Councillor Richards has got fourteen, but eighteen, eighteen suburbs, but she still has the same number of voters as I do, so, you know, but anyway, I suppose, any, any excuse to try and get some sort of relevance in this place. So that's why there was a petition done, it was a bit of mischief-making.
Further speakers? Councillor Howard. All right, I'll put the resolution. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
The contrary, no. The ayes have it. All right. Councillor Maddick, can I invite you to move the report of the Community Arts and Lifestyle Committee, please?
Mr Chair, I move the report of the Community Arts and Lifestyle Committee meeting held on Tuesday, 21st of May, 2019, be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Maddick, seconded by councillor Cunningham, that the report of the Community Arts and Lifestyle Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 21st of May, 2019, be adopted. Is there any debate? Councillor Maddick?
There is, Mr Chair. Just briefly, there are a couple of good issues on here, nearly as interesting or as inviting as the previous report. However, we'll get, there's a committee presentation which was in regards to the Brisbane BMX facilities. Pleased to be able to inform the chamber that the election commitment made by Lord Mayor Graham Quirk in regards to BMX facilities across the city has been delivered upon. We have the amazingly successful facility at Bracken Ridge. I'm very pleased to inform the chamber that we also now have the Dara BMX facility, which also again has been incredibly successful. This is about this administration continuing to deliver for Brisbane residents, continuing to provide them all with more to see and do, and making sure that we're engaging everyone within the community, not only older residents, but importantly also the young. I'd like to really thank the officers for their tremendous amount of work and councillor Burke for his great input into this process and making sure that we've delivered this great outcome. The second item is a petition requesting that commercial composting at 154 and 166 Mount Crosby Road, Anstead, not be permitted. This was a circumstance where a commercial business was being undertaken unlawfully, and there was great concerns raised by residents and by councillor Richards, as the local councillor, in regards to the composting business that was being conducted. Officers did, once it was brought to their attention, did investigate the matter. A show cause was issued. The premises was undertaking composting without a permit. And as a result of the work by officers, on their subsequent return, all of the composting material had been removed and the matter finalised. And the petition response reflects that. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Further speakers? There being none, I'll put the report. All those in favour say aye?
Aye.
The contrary, no. The ayes have it. Can I draw the attention of the chamber to the Finance and Administration Committee? Councillor Allen?
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move the report of the Finance and Administration Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 21st of May, 2019, be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Allen, seconded by councillor McLaughlin, the report of the Finance and Administration Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 21st of May, 2019, be adopted. Is there any debate? Councillor Allen. Any other contributions? There being none, I will move the report. All those in favour say aye?
Aye.
The contrary, no. The ayes have it. Petitions? Councillors, are there any petitions? Councillor Griffiths?
Yes. I have a petition on behalf of councillor Sri, which looks at designating Davies Park West End as a dog-off leash area. And another petition...
Please continue.
Sorry, in relation to reinstating of a bus stop at 70 Blunder Road, Forest Plague Place, Durack, to its original location.
Councillor Cook?
Thank you. Sorry, I have a petition requesting traffic calming in Henderson Street, Blimber.
Councillor Allen?
I have a petition requesting council fix the Turnbull Skate Park.
Any further petitions? Can I please have a motion?
Mr Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Richard, seconded by councillor Cook, that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All those in favour say aye?
Aye.
The contrary, no. The ayes have it. I will now remind councillors, are there any statements required as a result of a councillor conduct review panel order? Are there any matters of general business? Councillor Wyndham?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Mr Chairman, I rise tonight to say goodbye. No cheers, that's probably a good sign. Goodbye to my working life, as I will step down from council in a few days. I've been blessed throughout my life because from my days as an apprentice in teaching to a councillor, I've always enjoyed serving others. I would like to dedicate this past years to both my parents, who passed within recent times, and to my wife's parents. It was my parents who taught me that life is not about self, but about others. We are here to serve. Almost one year back today, to the day, while travelling home from the city, I received a call from my cardiologist. His words, "You have a clot in your heart which needs to be removed." This statement was not unexpected, but truly life-changing. Let me just say, there is nothing more difficult in this life than to discuss matters of death with your children. So I ask all of you, if ever you have the chance to have this discussion, don't delay it. I went into hospital the day after the Green Heart Fair, which is on again this coming Sunday. In fact, this coming Sunday will be the 10th. I remember the first one, it was a, I was actually the celebrity chef. And I cooked fresh pasta. And the other celebrity chef was a lady by the name of Lisa Newman. She made the different sauces. And I think councillor Maddick even took a sample home to share with the family. Having had three previous heart operations, I went to surgery with a prayer, a lot of confidence, not knowing that this high-risk atrium reduction operation would have me in theatre under anaesthetic for five days, with intensive care to follow. It was this event that had me decide that it was time to walk away from the work I love and spend time with those who are closest to me, those that care for me unconditionally. So to my wife, Pon Lepas, who's up in the chamber, "Your life will change as we enjoy everything from bike riding to farming and touring together." To my son, Thomas, "You have been there all those years, from when we often went out to trial playground equipment, through to you giving me advice on sustainability issues. You have even followed me into council, but you have been smarter about it by becoming a bus driver, for which you get more commendation." To close, family and friends, thank you so much for the strength you have given me and your encouragement over the years. It is with sadness that I leave this place, but I leave knowing the pleasure of serving the people of Brisbane as part of a team made off many hundreds of workers. Over the past 15 years, I've had the pleasure of working with, and I would sincerely thank both, Margot Stoker and Helen Bland, who are both in the chamber this evening in the gallery. For the majority of those years as a team, we have constantly delivered for the residents. It has been the little things like the broken bin or the issue of a footpath tree or the like. It's through the actions of our staff and that of council officers that our office has become one which has shown genuine care for residents and no matter their age or issue, resulting us having an office where people were very welcome just to drop in and say hi. I thank the staff of City Hall, those who clean or serve cups of tea during meetings. I will depart City Hall with fond memories of the service you have provided. It has also been greatly appreciated. You give this place warmth, a soul. To the council officers and staff who I've worked with over years past, it has been a pleasure. Your commitment to the residents of this wonderful city has never gone unnoticed in my eyes. And the friendship you have always shown has made working with you an enjoyable part of my time, serving both residents of McDowell and the city. To the residents, I would like to thank you for your ongoing support. I have always worked to deliver the very best possible for the ward, from keeping an eye on barking dogs to the opening up of both Hamilton and Bridgeman Roads, two major road upgrades which have made a much-needed difference to reduce traffic congestion on many local access roads. And to the many intersections and park upgrades and the continued expansion of shared cycle walkways, something that is continuing to grow in our area. As your councillor, I know there are ongoing issues that some believe need to be resolved. However, I have always sought the advice of those within council who have the training and skills to give the best outcome within the legislative constraints and budgetary priorities. To the leader of the opposition, Peter Cumming, who I affectionately refer to as Seagull because of the fact that when he sees food, he swoops on it, which is also fitting as the councillor for Wyndham. I would consider you a friend and constantly enjoy sharing a joke or two. Perhaps now they should be calling you Aroldite because you'll be the longest-serving one here and it's going to be very hard to get you out of that chair. Over the past years, I've seen some interesting, if not bizarre, self-serving behaviour. Only recently we saw one councillor give us, was it in the chambers or was it to the cameras, an immature diatribe on how he believes council works. We have others who state that they would just wish others would lie down and die. I also note the absence of the Greens and Independent Council this evening. These actions show a lack of respect for the institution of government and to those who established this place and gave birth to a thriving city, one of growth both socially and economically, with strong social inclusion. It is such growth that makes this, makes it possible for this city and council to deliver jobs and support for its residents. This is a city filled with opportunities for all, a city where we do all we can within our powers to provide for our residents, from such things like Homeless Connect to Lord Mayor's Youth Advisory Council, to our business hotline. To the mayors under which I have served, Campbell, Graham, and now Adrian, it has been through your guidance that this city has moved from a sleepy country town, living in the past, to a thriving new world city, recognised across the globe for its forward planning and delivery of international events such as the Asia-Pacific City Summits and the G20. I will be replaced by a woman who has proved to have a heart for people as she served in the area of the Member of Aspli and the Minister for Communities, Child Safety and Disability Services within the state government. So welcome, Tracy.
See you.
Your skills will serve to strengthen this administration. To my colleagues from 2004 until now, thanks for your enduring friendship and guidance. My friends, your ongoing support has made the year serving this city one of great pleasure. You have always shown that your position on council has been one of serving for the people and as a team, delivery has been foremost in your planning, making this city what it is, a vibrant new world city, built on a foundation of being clean, green, and sustainable. I do believe that your commitment to the, has delivered one of the strongest, most focused teams this city has ever seen. Your friendship and your support during the times when I've struggled with health concerns show your depth of character. I will miss this place, and you all know. There was a time when I believed but for my faith and the skills of a dedicated team of surgeons led by Dr Douglas Wall, I would not be speaking here today. So I say to you all, all I have played a great part of my life, and for that I will be forever grateful. Stay in touch because between farming and Thailand and touring this great country, there will be those times when I will need to have a coffee and check the pulse of this great city. Thanks for the memories, my friends. God bless.
Further general business? Thanks for coming.
Thanks, Mr Chair. I'd like to also acknowledge the efforts of councillor Wyndham. I congratulate him on his time in council. He's worked hard and was well-respected by his constituents. He never actually looked like losing the ward which had been held by Labour. I can recall, he briefly referred the incident, I can recall he made his mark from the outset by personally investigating a barking dog complaint at 2am in the morning. And so he got some media when some ungrateful person rang up about this bloke sitting in the car at such an hour outside someone's house listening to see whether the dog was barking or not. And I can recall councillor Hinchliffe saying at the time, telling the caucus that if his constituents got to hear about that, we'd never beat him. And that was, that was the case. I can also recall speaking to one of his education colleagues about his ability as a turner of furniture, and that said that Norm was very good with his hands. And so Norm is multi-skilled as well. I can also recall making a speech about, because Norm had probably had some seniority and could have been a front-venture, and I can recall making a speech accusing councillor Maddick of stabbing him in the back or something like that to take his position. And it was meant to be funny, it was, I think. We got a lot of laughs that day. It was probably the funniest speech I've ever made, which wouldn't be hard, I guess, but anyhow. So the other thing, Norm has had a lot of heart problems, health problems, but I think he's kept himself pretty fit and which must have really helped his, his problems as well. I'd wish Norm and his wife a long and happy retirement and best wishes and congratulations for your effort as a councillor.
Further general business? Lord Mayor?
Thank you, Mr Chair. I'd also like to pay tribute to Norm tonight. And in many respects, it's the, it's the end of an era because Norm, on our side of the team, is the longest-serving councillor in, in this administration. And he was elected before me, and in fact, he was the only Liberal councillor at the time that was elected together with Campbell Newman in 2004. So Campbell scraped in as Lord Mayor at the time against the odds. No one expected it, least of all us. We all worked hard for it, but we didn't expect it. But Norm was also elected at that election in, in 2004. And so as, as the only remaining member of the class of 2004, as I said, it is a bit of an end of an era. But in that 15 years, give or take, that Norm has served, he has left a big impression on me and I know many of the members of our team. There's so many different things I could say, but I remember his early nickname when he, when he won the ward was Stormin' Norman. And we, and that was a tribute to his persistence, treating the campaign like a military operation, door knocking every single house. And in fact, I remember at the time, his campaign director told him to stop door knocking or do less of it. And it was just incredible persistence that got him to where he, he was elected in 2004. And it is, it is genuinely a hard thing to knock off a sitting member in councillor, in council here. Like it is, it's quite a rare thing. Often, you know, seats change hands when there's retirements or other changes to boundaries, but, but Norm did it the old-fashioned way. Campaigned hard, worked hard, represented his community, and won an election that was a very tough ask at that point. I remember his big campaigns and constant repetition about the Remick Street bushland. And that was, I'll never forget that. Norm would speak about it endlessly. Remick Street bushland was, was his big local issue for many years. And the community also remembered his stance on that because it was, you know, in many ways, it was a challenging issue for everyone involved. But Norm was passionate about that issue. And I remember just a few weeks ago, he spoke about the Remick Street bushland. It was just last week, again. The, the issue of barking dogs came up and no tribute to Norm would be complete without a reference to that. It was interesting because I, I saw a little bit of the, the background to that situation. And I've got to say, in the Lord Mayor's office at the time, there was mass panic when this issue erupted. And when the paper came out that day, which we've got a copy of here, it's got, it's got a picture of Norm sitting in his car. And then there's one taken in the middle of the night, and it says, "I'm no night stalker." And a Brisbane city councillor who yesterday admitted he sat outside a constituent's house in the middle of the night on six separate occasions said he wasn't stalking the householder. And so, as you can imagine, at the time, Campbell, Campbell Newman as mayor was like, "What is going on here?" And the fascinating... occasions, to, to check on this barking dog issue, that shows commitment. And I think he puts us all to shame when it comes to commitment. And so, that was actually one of the things that was the making of councillor Wyndham, unexpectedly, but it really showed his passion for the job, and, and the determination and ability to go the extra mile above and beyond the call of duty in many ways.
Lord Mayor, can I just stop you very quickly? As it's nearing 9pm, and if this council doesn't decide to proceed past 9pm, this will reconvene in the morning, is it the will of this council that we continue beyond 9pm? All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
The contrary, no? The ayes have it. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Another issue that has also been mentioned is Norm's previous career as a teacher, and I understand also as a manual arts teacher as well. But Norm's, Norm's approach to life, and his approach to the job, is very much within that, I guess, realm of, of being a teacher even when he's not a teacher. And so, he always takes the opportunity to, to talk to people, to explain things to them, to make sure that they understand what is going on, and to help people learn and get better. And so, and I remember Norm, throughout the years, has given me some really worthwhile pieces of advice, and they weren't given gratuitously, it was just, Norm, Norm tries to help. He's there to help, he wants to help other people, he cares about other people. And he took that from his teaching profession, through to his job as a councillor. Cycling, I can, I can say, and we all know that Norm is a keen cyclist, and I think it is probably a big part of the reason why you are alive today, and you're sitting here with us, because, you know, when we talk about active travel, it's more than just about reducing traffic congestion, it's also about the health benefits that come with active travel, and Norm is living testament to those benefits, because getting out on his bike, getting around the ward, and other parts of the city is a big part of what he does. And he's, he's a living, breathing testament to an active and healthy lifestyle, which is something that his constituents now get to benefit from, because, I tell you what, out of all the wards in Brisbane, other than the Gabber Ward, I think, Norm's ward has probably the most cycling infrastructure up there, and new bikeways, and all types of facilities, and that is because of your passion and hard work, Norm. So, the other thing, and just in closing, that I always will remember about Norm, is that he attended the opening of an envelope. And so, he would turn up in all parts of the city, and he would always say, "You know what? 10 or 20 people here, 100 people over there, there's sure to be someone from my electorate, or my ward, that's at that event, even if it's at the other side of the city." And, and it was true. And so, people would see him out and about, all over the city, and they knew how active he was and committed to the job. So, I want to say to Norm, thank you for what you have done, not only for your local residents, but for the city of Brisbane, but thank you for what you have done for our team, and the source of strength, guidance, and inspiration that you have provided us all. You may have a dodgy ticker, but you've got a heart of gold.
Further general business. Councillor Burke.
Thanks very much, Mr Chair, and I'd just like to say a few words about councillor Wyndham as well, on this evening when he's leaving the council chamber. As the Lord Mayor has said, councillor Wyndham has been with us for 15 years. Of course, he first contested the seat of Marchant back in the 2000 election, and wasn't successful there, and then backed up and ran for the seat of McDow, where he beat the sitting Labour councillor, one of the few councillors in this place to actually beat a sitting Labour councillor on their boundaries at a quadrennial election. In the 15 years he has served in this place, he has shown the same humble, genuine approach to dealing with each and every one of us, as he has with his community, and as he did through his professional life as a teacher. While small in stature, he is a giant in his community, because he has lived and breathed his role as a councillor. He has lived and breathed riding bicycles, as the Lord Mayor said, and advocating for cycle improvements across the city. He's lived and breathed his commitment to this team's green agenda and the sustainability agenda that we have had, whether it is going to Greenheart Fairs, going to bush care groups, attending Habitat Brisbane functions. Norm has been there, and most importantly, not afraid to get his hands dirty, side by side with members of his community, right across this city. He has delivered on his commitment to the people of service above self. He has always sought to do the best by this city, and by the community that he has represented. And that is why he has been re-elected at four elections by the residents of the McDow Ward, and they hold him in such high esteem. As I said earlier, he is a humble individual, and while he spoke tonight about some of the challenges that he's faced, each and every one of us in this place are humans. Whether the cut and thrust of the council chamber, and the rigorous debate that we have in here sometimes, at the end of the day, we're all humans, and we all have our own challenges in our lives, and Norm has had those. But the one endearing thing, the one thing that I take out of everything that has happened in the 11 years that I've been in this place, having had Norm here, is that he's always had a positive attitude. And he said it tonight, when he thought, and he talked about the challenges he had last year with his surgery, and it's something that has stuck with me through the whole of the time that Norm has been here. He would always ask how you were. He would always seek to engage with you, question what's happening in your life, or what's happening in your community, and try to provide some advice and support, as the Lord Mayor said. Not because he had to, but because he wanted to. And that is why he has been such a fantastic councillor, and such a fantastic member of this team. Each and every one of us, whether we're on this side of the chamber, or the other side of the chamber, are in here because of those that have gone before us. The founders of this city, the indigenous inhabitants of this land who are before us, we are all here because of those that have gone before us. And Norm has made an immense contribution to this team, and to this city. I remember the first time I heard councillor Wyndham deliver a speech in this place, I actually came in before the 2008 election, and sat up in the public gallery for a little while, just to see how council worked. And at the time, the city was going through the drought. And I remember, one by one, and this is not encouraging your councillor coming to, to implement this for your side, one by one, the then opposition, even though we had the merrility, stood up and spoke for their 10 minutes in general business about rainwater tanks, and why the council should be implementing policies to have rainwater tanks provided for sports groups and so on and such forth. And councillor Wyndham dutifully delivered his 10-minute speech. And ever since then, when councillor Wyndham has stood up and spoken, it's always had great content, it's always had great interest with what he has said, and what he's provided to the debate in this place. The Lord Mayor spoke about the councillor stalking newspaper article, he spoke about how councils, sorry, residents across this country contacted Norm and said, "We actually want you as our local councillor." And as I said earlier, that's because Norm lived and breathed his commitment to the people that he represented in this city. The most important thing to me, though, was the support that Norm gave me during the 2011 floods. My part of the city, like a few others, many others in this place, was significantly damaged. Norm's part of the city didn't have flood damage. But for two weeks, the councillor for McDow was out in my ward. He went door to door to help my residents. He brought care baskets from his community church groups. He helped clean people's homes. He helped keep me okay, most importantly, I think, at times. He, he went after we cleaned up the streets, and helped repair people's homes. I remember going into one resident's home, and there was Norm Wyndham and Carol Cashman, helping putting insulation behind, sheeting, jiprock sheeting, inside one of my residents' homes. And, "Norm, I will forever be in your debt for what you did to my, what you did for my community during those two weeks." Your friendship to not just me, but to councillors who have been in this place over the 15 years that you've been here, has been immense. There's a saying, which has been bandied about in politics, and can't be attributed to anyone, which is, "If you want a friend in politics, you should get a dog." Well, we've all had Norm Wyndham, and he is the best friend that anyone in this place can have. All the best, Norm, for your future, all the best for your future with Patsy, and we wish you all the best of luck in your retirement. Congratulations, Norm.
Further general business. Councillor Owen.
Thank you. I rise tonight to speak about medical advancements in Brisbane, and their impact on patients and their families. Many people will never have heard the terms laryngectomy, neovasculation, glausectomy, And I hope they never have to. These are surgical procedures relating to oral and oropharyngeal cancer. I personally know that they're not only just tough words for families to hear, but the prognosis is even harder to comprehend, not just for the families, but for the patients who have to endure them. Laryngectomy is the total removal of the larynx or voice box, which includes the separation of the airway from the mouth, nose, and esophagus, to a stoma, which is an opening in the neck. A glausectomy is the complete removal of the tongue. Neovasculation is the transplant and connection of blood vessels to assist transplanted muscle to facilitate a swallow reflex for patients who have undergone a glausectomy, in the hope that they may be able to consume some form of food in the future. In the 1990s, the treatment for cancer of the vocal cords, throat, and voice box was generally the removal of the voice box, redirection of the windpipe to the base of the neck, followed by radium. Today, with the medical advancements, some localised tumours in the voice box can be treated by laser reducing the instances, but can be treated by laser, reducing the instances of total laryngectomies. For these patients, speech is difficult, and not always possible after a total laryngectomy. Sometimes you see some people utilising an electro-larynx, which picks up the vibrations in the throat. Other times, patients may be able to speak with the aid of prosthesis, sometimes it's not possible at all. Oral and oropharyngeal cancers are often difficult to diagnose, as often, there are not a lot of visible symptoms. Often, they start with symptoms such as persistent laryngitis for throat cancer, severe toothache-like pain, speech impediments, or swelling in and around the lymph nodes and neck for mouth cancer. Breathing impediments may occur with swelling, and then communication challenges arise. In certain cases, tongue cancer is a secondary cancer to other oropharyngeal cancers. Breathing and communication impediments often impinge on the level of independence of patients, which for them is incredibly debilitating. The sequence of diagnosis, clinical assessment, scans, biopsies, along with the head and neck clinic specialist surgical team analysis, all takes time. Then there is the pre-admission process, followed by the difficult and lengthy surgery, and then the long, arduous journey of recovery. Some surgeries require transplanting bone into the jaw, transplanting blood vessels into the neck, grafting skin and muscle, significant reconstructive and microsurgery, as well as the removal of cancerous tissues. For families, it is not an easy process to go through with a loved one, and during this time, it is highly emotional, ever fluctuating, and depending on changes which present, it also depends on how aggressive the cancer may be. You have to be available for the patient when they need you, not when you want to be there for them. This is not always predictable, nor able to necess, nor able to necessarily need to change, sorry. This is not always predictable, nor able to be pre-organised, especially when treatment options need to change unexpectedly. I know it is not easy for families to be faced with this situation. It is even harder to have the final conversation with a loved one for the very last time before they go into surgery, when you know that after that surgery, the gift of speech will forever be taken away. It is especially difficult when you know surgery the following day, which goes from 6am to 11:15pm, with two surgical teams, and amazing doctors and nurses looking after them, will still be a major challenge for them to even survive. In this place, we have the responsibility to be the voice for people, and I choose to reflect on the medical challenges encountered over the past few months, from a position of dignity and strength. I thank the Lord Mayor for his compassion, understanding, and support, most importantly, in recent weeks, especially when I indicated I was prepared to attend the council meeting, and especially for respecting the privacy of my family, who did not need to be under public scrutiny, or caused undue distress at that time. We are privileged in this city of Brisbane to have specialist surgeons in these fields, specifically Dr Chris Perry and Dr Michael Waggles, who over many years have been performing lifesaving and life-changing operations. I am truly grateful for their surgical teams, and for the work that they do on a daily basis, giving their patients the opportunity to cherish as many additional days of life as possible. I also thank everyone who works in the diagnostic, assessment, and post-operative teams for the vital work that they do. Dr Chris Perry is a leader in his, in his field of head and neck cancers, and Dr Michael Waggles is leading the way in neovascular plastic and reconstructive surgery. We have these two gentlemen here in Brisbane, and I am appreciative that we have retained their talent and skill here. Last week, it was announced that Professor Ian Fraser will be starting human clinical trials on 12 patients with tumours caused by human papillomavirus, with his vaccine developed to attack head and neck cancer. This ties into the work that he has done relating to HPV and the Gardasil vaccine, which also prevents some tumours of the head and neck. The PA Research Foundation have supported Professor Fraser and Professor Sandro Posidio by funding a world-first clinical trial in the fight against incurable head and neck cancer caused by HPV. There has been a skyrocketing increase in the occurrence of HPV-positive head and neck cancer, and the work that has been undertaken by Professor Fraser on his antivirus vaccine, and also Dr Shemindul Panadhirah saliva test. These will potentially revolutionise the way head and neck cancers are treated, not only here in Brisbane, but also across the world. The researchers have ethics approval for the trial, but still need $700,000 for it to go ahead. I choose to use my voice today to advocate in support of these doctors and scientists here in our city of Brisbane, and their efforts to assist patients today and in the future, and to provide preventative measures for the future. to go ahead. I choose to use my voice today to advocate in support of these doctors and scientists here in our city of Brisbane and their efforts to assist patients today and in the future and to provide preventative measures for the future.
Further general business, councillor Marks.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on the 2019 National Alga Conference that I was invited to attend as the Brisbane City Council representative. I also want to make mention councillor Owen, that having gone through difficult times, we all appreciate that. I think a number of us have been accused in this place of being arrogant, out of touch, lazy, because God forbid we took a couple of days off to visit with our family. So we're all feeling where you're in that space because, you know, we've all had it happen to us at one time or another. Anyway, so I want to say thank you to the Lord Mayor for sending me down to the Alga Conference, which was held in Blacktown in Sydney. That was on the 16th of July. I have to say, it was quite an interesting conference. We started with, as usual, a welcome ceremony. We had a smoking ceremony, which I have to admit, I've been a part of a couple of them, but I've never been one with quite so much smoke involved before. The asthmatics had to all go inside. It was pretty incredible, even there's a woman who put her baby through the smoke. But anyway, didn't seem to be bothered by it. There was a couple of very good workshops in there and one of the ones I attended was dealing with difficult people, which I thought would be very relevant for us and our position that we have. And they very kindly gave us a booklet that we could all take home. So I've been reading that every day and learning how to deal with difficult people. So it's here if anyone else would like to use it. So it's a good to know. We had another, a couple of speakers there that were quite interesting. In particular, we had Deborah Thomas. Now, I don't know if you, many people, potentially maybe the males in this room might not be aware, but she was actually the editor of the Australian Women's Weekly for a number of years, so quite revered and held in very high esteem in that role. Put a lot of work into her life in that particular one. One thing I didn't know, she was actually a former councillor as well with the Wulara municipal council. So that was something I wasn't aware of. But more tragically, she was the CEO involved when the Dreamworld tragedy happened and she did relate that story back to us and what happened and how it was all dealt with in the media and everything like that. And there was a few tears involved, so I can say that it still affects her to this day. There was another lady who spoke about, she was the Director of Planning and Development with Blacktown City Council, having held that position for quite some years, back in the day when they used to hand paint the maps apparently. So who knew that? She mentioned about reports, how they used to be typed on this thing called carbon paper. And I have to admit, I knew exactly what she was talking about. It was a bit of a shame. So yeah, everything had to be in duplicate with a carbon paper, so that was interesting. But yeah, I had never heard of the hand painted maps done before. The other thing of note that happened while we were down there was a guy by the name of Bill Shorten turned up to this hall that's there in Blacktown. Apparently it's the same hall that Gulf Whitlam did some sort of speech. No, it was Gulf Whitlam did some sort of famous speech. I don't know what it was, it's well before my time. So in the same hall apparently. So there was a lot of talk about that, but unfortunately he didn't see fit to come and visit us, even though there was, you know, 30 or 40 old women there from, all representing our local government council. So that was a bit of a shame, would have been nice to say hello. But anyway, so, but the only other thing, of course, as we have, as always, they have finished with a gala evening, which was a 1920s theme, so that was quite nice. And then, but we had an early start again the next morning, as usual. And our emcee for the whole event was Jessica Rowe and I think she did a brilliant job. So again, I want to say thank you to Lord Mayor for sending me down there. We get a lot of stuff out of these particular conferences and it's always good to bring back, especially a workbook dealing with difficult people. Thank you.
Further general business? They're being none, I declare the meeting closed.